I've gotta get a flu for it. No.
It's just ridiculous.
Yeah, about half a day. Thanks, John.
Ceremony, was it?
Hey, Gracie Pendleton.
Good evening, Ron, sir. How are you all?
Good, good, Mayor. Good, how are you?
Good.
Mark, Justin, it's not mine.
Okay. That's all we know.
I don't know. Done.
Who's this again?
It's hard to remember, but I think we have that done. Take down all of them. Good.
I mean, it's all we know. I said, oh.
You have a lot of work, thank you.
I said, I'm doing all right.
It's your place.
It's my week.
We're clear. I said, that's why we keep the door around here.
Working every day.
Well, I do Monday, Thursday, Friday off. Way, I'm way beyond like, I'm gonna come closer to these.
I've got about one minute for what everybody sees. Do I have the old piece of card? Nobody wants to talk to you at all.
I can't see it.
There's a little layer right where I need to see it.
Sir, what's your clock say up there?
What's that?
Clock. Does it say about a minute and ten?
So I guess.
Two, three, four, five.
An hour and a half.
Yeah.
Yes, my name is.
I belong in, so can you help me just on the direction?
Yeah, they've got this.
I'm so happy to see you. Beautiful involvements.
Everything could be a view. I have six o'clock. Is everybody still? Okay, here we go. I want to call the city council meeting of December the 20th, 2011 to order. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Gray, here. Boudreaux, here. Kenyon, here. Petty, here. Tennant, here. Farrell, here. Adams, here. Lewis, here. Mayor Jordan, here.
Would you join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the mayor's announcements and proclamations and recognitions, I'd like to recognize Mrs. Hopper's American History and Government Class from Woodland Junior High. Would y'all stand to be recognized tonight? Wonderful. Well, if you want to learn about government, this is the evening to do that. Looking at the agenda. Okay. The next thing we have on the agenda is the nominating committee report. Adele, I believe you had that?
Yes, we had a wonderful number of applicants this year from our city and we are, we had a great evening of interviewing, about 28 of them, and have made our decision and we are happy to announce. For the Active Transportation Advisory Committee, we have five appointments. Gwen Thompson, Gail Wingate, Jared Hintergard, Nick Jones, and Erin Thomas. All of their terms will be ending 12/31/13. For the Airport Board, we have two appointments. Ken Haxel and one aeronautical term ending 12/31/16. Bill Corley, one University of Arkansas term ending 12/31/16. For the Animal Services Advisory Board, we had one opening and no applicants, we're sorry to say. For the Audit Committee, we have one opening and one appointment, and that's Judy Jacobs with one term ending 12/31/14. Board of Adjustments, we have one appointment, that's Tim Stein, one unexpired term ending 3/31/15. Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals, we have one appointment. Brian Hoag, one unexpired alternate member term ending 3/31/12. For Environmental Action Committee, two appointments. Dana Smith, one citizen-at-large term ending 12/31/14. And Lori Yazwinski, one citizen-at-large term ending 12/31/14. Housing Authority Board of Commissions, Matthew Cabe, one term ending 12/28/16. For Parks and Rec Board, we had Philip McKnight. And we appoint Philip McKnight, Grant Hughes, and John Paul. All three terms ending 12/31/14. For the Telecommunications Board, we had one appointment. Greg Goggins, one unexpired term ending 6/30/13. For Urban Forestry Advisory Board, two appointments. Betty Martin, one university representative, term ending 12/31/13. And Don Steinkross, one community citizen-at-large term ending 12/31/13. That concludes our recommendations.
We approve, Mayor.
The motion is second to approve the nominating committee report and those that have been appointed to the boards. Any discussion on that? Sondra, would you please call the row?
Gray, yes. Boudreaux, yes. Kenyon, yes. Petty, yes. Tennant, yes. Farrell, yes. Adams, yes. Lewis, yes.
Okay, the next thing we have is the Fayetteville Town Center Report. I believe you all have been handed that report. Did you all get the report, the written report? You have not. I understand then that we do not have anybody to give a report on that tonight. Is that true?
The report was in the council packet.
That's what I thought.
Yes, it was in the council packet.
Okay. Is there any questions on the report?
We do have someone from the town center here.
Sandy, how are you? Do you have any questions for Sandy on the report? Okay, do we need any kind of motion in a second to accept that? All right, thank you all very much. All right, on the consent agenda tonight, we have number one, approval of the December 6th, 2011 city council meeting minutes. Number two, 2012 Transportation Division Overlay Sidewalk Projects. Resolution approving the Transportation Division Overlay Sidewalk Project List for 2012. Number three, bid number 10-40, Amerilux Exterior LLC. Resolution authorizing purchase of 37 LED light fixtures and poles in the amount of $67,667.27 pursuant to bid number 10-40 from Amerilux Exteriors LLC, formerly known as Dynamic Lighting Solutions. Number four, 2011-2012 Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force Program Continuation Grant. Resolution accepting a non-matching 2011-2012 Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force Program Continuation Grant from the Arkansas State Police in the amount of $5,000 and approving a budget adjustment. Number five, Federal Police Department donations revenue. A resolution approving a budget adjustment in the amount of $1,800 recognizing revenue received from various donations to the Federal Police Department in support of general recognition and officer service awards and expressing gratitude to the donors. Number six, Arkansas Recreational Trails Grant. Resolution approving an agreement of understanding with the Arkansas State Highway and Transportation Department for the acceptance of an Arkansas Recreational Trails Grant in the amount of $80,000 for the construction of Lake Fayetteville Trail South and approving a budget adjustment. Number seven, ASPCA Scholarship donations. Resolution to accept a scholarship donation in the amount of $1,561 from the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals for Animal Control Officer Chris Herrman to attend a cruelty investigation course at the University of Missouri and to approve a budget adjustment to recognize its revenue. Number eight, Baird, Kurtson, Dobson LLP, a resolution approving a contract with Baird, Kurtson, Dobson LLP in the amount of $87,000 to provide independent audit services to the city of Fayetteville. Number nine, Picket Construction Incorporated. Resolution to approve a change order with Picket Construction Incorporated in the amount of $19,710 and to approve a budget adjustment to recognize a donation from the Fayetteville Youth Baseball League up to $33,600 to complete this project.
Mayor, we need to pull the minutes from the meeting because, from the consent agenda because they're not ready. We won't approve them at the next meeting.
So we need a motion in a second to pull those?
Should we just pull them?
Okay. All right, those are pulled. Other than that, I will accept a motion to accept the consent agenda as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as read. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Gray, yes. Boudreaux, yes. Kenyon, yes. Petty, yes. Tennant, yes. Farrell, yes. Adams, yes. Lewis, yes.
Okay, under unfinished business. Number one, Premier Lighting Group. Resolution to award a bid for 37 LED light fixtures and poles from Premier Lighting Group in the amount of $70,661.
Mayor, we tabled this last meeting at my request. This actually was totally redone and was, had just been approved, the same basic contract as number three. And there were some problems with the name of the company. They had changed their name and that's why we had to redo it. So this has already been approved, so I recommend this be tabled indefinitely and then it will automatically be denied on December 31st.
Okay, I need, we have a motion in a second to table Premier Lighting Group. Item number one, indefinitely. Any comments on that? Sondra, would you please call the row?
Gray, yes. Boudreaux, yes. Kenyon, yes. Petty, yes. Tennant, yes. Farrell, yes. Adams, yes. Lewis, yes.
Oh, yes. Number two, naming alley. A resolution to name the alley that runs from Dixon Street south towards Center Street between School Avenue and Locust Avenue for 9/11 purposes. Okey dokey. Who wants to start? Oh, John, you have something for us. Thank you.
I'll start. John Goddard, GIS Coordinator for the city. Of course, previous council meeting, we considered Midtown and Diagon for this alley name. Since then, we have approved, the committee has approved both Bakery and Shipley as possible street names for that. And I think also what's under consideration is what the suffix name will be. Alley, lane, that kind of thing. So, anyway.
Okay, do you have any questions for John on this? Okay. What's the council want to do on this? I guess you want to hear from the public or do you all want to?
Do we need to make a motion? If we, is there a motion on the floor?
I don't think we have any kind of motion whatsoever. The first thing we had was Midtown.
I actually believe there is a motion on the floor. It's a motion in a second to amend the.
Yes. Okay. Sondra, do you have that? Is that?
I can look and see. I mean, then we'll have something.
I'm sorry, I don't.
At the last meeting, it was moved to amend it to Diagon and then the, it was seconded and then new tabled, which took precedent after that.
Okay, so what did we all make? Do we go ahead and go back to the original motion?
I think you do from the tabling. It just, it's off the table now, so that motion is up for consideration now.
So the motion is to name it Diagon, correct? And with a second?
I have a comment, Mayor.
Well, I'm fixing to get, I mean, we're not going to just rush in and start going here.
Is it Diagon Alley or Diagon Alley? Okay. I was under the impression that we can't name it street or alley, or we can't name it street perhaps because that carries with it cer- certain ordinances that we would have to make it, it'd have to be a certain width and so forth.
That may be, I think that's, that's correct. Jeremy, do you?
So it has, so it needs to be Alley, is that correct?
Right, I think you're right, Adele.
In order not to have to meet a lot of regulations. Okay, thank you.
And before I can ever approve it anyway, I've got to name it. So, so we have, yes, Matthew?
Well, I just wanted, before public comment, to say that, you know, I think any of the names that have been suggested are just fine for an alley. The 9-1-1 Committee has approved all the names that have been suggested so far, and I think that's the standard for measuring the public safety of any suggestions. I only support Diagon because of the frankly overwhelmingly positive support that we've seen since the idea was suggested, but honestly, I think any of the names are fine. It's just that, you know, all the reactions have been so positive, that's why I support it. So I guess we'll have discussion and then maybe I'd like to read one comment we received earlier today.
Okay, Bobby, I believe you have a comment?
Yes, Mayor, I'd just like to say, you know, I certainly respect Alderman Petty and Kenyon's idea for the naming of that alley. I, I just would like to, the council will be advised that I plan to offer an amendment also to go to name it Shipley Alley. And I'm sure we've got plenty of, and also that the neighborhood association where the alley is, it asked for ship to the alley, but we'll have plenty more to go along with this after.
Well, my understanding is this motion would have to fail, would it not, to offer up another one or how does that work yet?
Probably it would have to fail, although you can, you can amend a motion, you can amend, secondarily amend it too, but sooner or later, we need to get five votes for one of them.
Yes.
Mayor, I'm willing to defer until after we vote. I just wanted to let the council know that I am coming with a, should it not prevail?
Right. Randy, you have?
I just wanted to say I was second his motion wherever he makes that, so. I mean, I certainly think that the Shipley Alley was a good suggestion last week and worth a good consideration, so now we'll hear from everybody, I'm sure.
Okay. Well, let's take a little public comment. Now, here's the rules. Everybody gets one turn at the microphone unless an Alderman brings you up for questions. Okay, introduce yourself and you come to the microphone. So, everybody, let's, let's, let's begin.
Mr. Mayor, I'm Catherine Bass and I am the reason this is on the agenda. We had an emergency responder situation earlier this fall, which I reported to your office through your chief of staff, and it was his suggestion that because of the infill that has occurred on the south end of this alley, that we probably needed to look at readdressing some of the residences. For instance, on the lot where my house is located, there is a Ford Plex in the back. And when we built that, the 9-1-1 Coordinator determined that all five residences would carry the same address. And this in fact was the address where we had the emergency responder situation. It was not a life and death situation, but had it been, there was almost a 20-minute delay while they tried to find the correct address. So that's the reason that we're even looking at this. There's been so much infill that I think the readdressing will be good. We're hoping the council understands that this is not really a citywide situation, it is really a local neighborhood situation and that the people who live at these infill residences are going to be the ones impacted by our decision. And I would ask for the council's favorable consideration for Alderman Farrell's recommendation of Shipley. We feel like it's historically significant, but it's also geographically significant. And the only purpose we have in doing this, I feel, is to make sure that we have a clear, precise, understandable name so that if there is another fire emergency or we call for our EMTs, there would never be a situation like we had in October. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
Hi, my name is Brady Carmen and I come in support for Diagon Alley. I think it would be having like the literary history of Fayetteville with like the creative writing program from U of A and how we have the library, the number one library in the country a few years ago and a few bookstores around there. I think if we like, we can really solidify that with Diagon Alley. And also, Diagon Alley would just have such broad appeal that like, we have so many visitors coming through here and Crystal Bridges, all these new things coming in. I think that would be like an intersection that would become, people would have their picture taken at like Dixon and Diagon Alley. And I think it'd be, I know I've talked to some friends from out of state who really love Fayetteville and they just think that's great. I think it just fits.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Molly Carmen. I'm a teacher at Fayetteville High School. I teach English, actually. And I support Diagon Alley because when I told my students about naming the alley, their eyes lit up, they got excited. I believe some of them may have emailed you and I apologize for the grammar and spelling if there was anything wrong with it. But they were excited about it. They thought it would be something fun and special for Fayetteville. And I think that Shipley is a fine name and I like that it has a history in that area as well. But I think that any town could have an alley with a name like Shipley Alley, but it takes a really special town and a really fun town to have such an exciting and magical name as Diagon Alley. And I think that, I think that people would just love it and it would just be another thing to love about Fayetteville. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am. Ma'am.
Molly, I just, do you also, do you, do you teach like The Lord of the Rings and are there some other old? I'm just thinking, how long will that, we know what Diagon Alley?
I, I mean, I'm not an expert, but I think that, I think that Harry Potter is going to be as long-lasting and well-loved as The Chronicles of Narnia or Mary Poppins or, I mean, you know, Cherry Tree Lane. I think that's a good idea too, actually, for Mary Poppins. But I mean, I think that it'll, I think that people will, will love it for a very, very long time.
Okay, who else?
Mayor, Council, Gracie Pendleton. Gracie Leach Pendleton. And to stand up here in front of you all is an honor, but I don't know what a Diagon is. Sorry. But I do know what a Shipley is, since it was my grandfather that started the bakery back in 1936 on Dixon Street. So I literally grew up on Dixon Street and there's probably not many people here that even know that or even know that significance behind it. And I think it would be a great honor to Fayetteville, to this area, and to have grown up down there, literally grown up on Dixon Street with businesses and drugstores and Coca-Cola Company and filling stations that are not there. I mean, it's an entertainment district, yes, now, but it wasn't back then. And we used to call it Shooter Town. I don't know if many of you all know that or not. And when you went that away, you went downtown. When you came up here, you came uptown. So I have grown up and I would surely, surely, surely know that my grandfather and his brother, Benjamin Harrison out of Fort Smith, would be very honored and pleased. I know that the 9-1-1 has to be named and I'm totally in agreeance with that. This fine lady here with her dilemmas and things, that needs to be done. But that alley has a lot of significance to Fayetteville and I would certainly consider that an honor for you all to consider Shipley or Bakery Alley or something to that effect, just so that area can be well-kept. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else? See, now I'll bring it back to the council. Any other discussion? Yes?
Just wanted to read a couple of things that have been sent to us. The first was a Washington Post editorial from July of this year. The title was, "Is Harry Potter Classic Children's Literature?" And there's a quote from the article, just says, if I could find it very quickly. "One need only look at the amount of scholarly work in the form of presentations, articles, chapters, and books with a Harry Potter focus to see the impact of the series on literary scholarship." And I think that echoes some of the comments we've seen from the public. We had one person email us who said that Harry Potter began her love of reading and it's only because of Harry Potter that she still reads fiction. One comment we received today from a resident on South Locust. "I live on South Locust and I wanted to let you know that I think Diagon Alley is a perfect name for an alley in Fayetteville. My son loves the Harry Potter movies and when he heard about this, he said Fayetteville is so cool, I am glad I live here." He's in the seventh grade at Owl Creek where many of the kids are talking about the city's decision to name this alley Diagon Alley. The most recent comment on Facebook, this is the last comment I'll read. "An alley with a literary name recognized around the world would not only add a new tourist point of interest, it would also introduce new opportunities for businesses, the community, and the city, which translates into people spending money. Naming the alley something benign with, with no potential or promise of added dollars to our city is not only missing the opportunity, but lacking creativity. The name Diagon Alley is known by millions, not the least of which the next generation of business owners and consumers. And having that alley there could potentially make it a destination spot for travels who may, for travelers who may otherwise only pass through." That's a comment made by one of 390 fans on the Facebook page, and I don't think that this is all about Facebook or that it's all about kids. Seventy percent of the people who have liked that page are over the age of 25. Now, it's not that I think any of the other names are bad at all. I think they're just fine names. The only reason that I propose that the council consider this is because of the overwhelming positive reaction to the suggestion. For me, it's just, that reaction has just been, frankly, it's just inspiring and that's the kind of quality that I wanted to vote for in the name.
Who else?
Bobby? Yeah, like I say, I certainly understand that. I would just, I would ask, any consideration that we hold the historical significance for historic landmark? As far as I know, to my knowledge, Diagon never lived in Fayetteville nor started a business and helped the city grow and prosper and became a landmark. With due deference to your idea, you know, I respect it, I just feel like it's worth my time and my energy to try to conserve the name Shipley. If you've been around here a long time, that family has been on the hospital board, has been on school boards, has helped this city build, flourish. And I, and I think that it's a, it's a, it's something that's worth considering, that I would say that if you could do some kind of a plebiscite in the city instantaneously and you ask who all knew where Shipley Bacon Company was, that you would get many more responses that knew where Shipley Bacon Company was than you did about where the proposed Diagon Alley was going to be. So ask that you consider that when you vote.
Jeff?
Well, first I want to thank Alderman Petty because I think because of him bringing this forward and using social media and things that he did, I've heard from more 20-somethings on this particular issue than any other issue since I've been on the council. So at the very least, it's gotten people active and for that, I thank him very much. I don't have a problem with, with that name. I don't have a problem with Harry Potter. I'm not a huge fan, but maybe I'm, I'm a little, maybe I'm one step up in generation, I'm not sure, but you know, I, I think if we're going to start looking at movies and at works of art like that, we've already heard Mary Poppins and Tales of Narnia and, you know, I mean, in my generation, it was Star Wars and I don't want to name this thing Chewbacca or Yoda or anything like that. And I'm not comparing it to that. But I do see historical significance. I agree with Alderman Farrell. As much as I like the creativity that's behind the, the suggested name, you know, my parents always talk about when they were in college here and they went to Jug Wheeler's Drive-In and they smelled the bakery at Shipley and it's, it's that kind of historical stuff that, that I like. Some people say, let's don't be nostalgic and they think it's a bad thing, but I think the fact that that alley touches that building and the fact that the neighborhood association is in agreement on that, I think is a, is an important thing for us to consider. And I, I understand completely the, the Harry Potter importance and I appreciate it, but I prefer the name Shipley for, for all those reasons.
Anybody else? Ron?
We have a wonderful word for citizen. I should start by saying thank you, Matthew, too. And appreciate the privilege to hear from young people as well. I have a bunch of people at the law school have contacted me and it's been fun to have conversations about it. But it sparked my interest to get out Ethel Simpson's book Once Upon Dixon, Ethel Lynn and her co-author, Mr. Wapple. And I enjoyed looking at an illustration in this book of a 1948 map. So it's 64 years. book of a 1948 map. So it's 64 years now, I think. And if you have a chance, I didn't make copies to pass out, didn't want to waste trees, but it's really fun to look at this. Ethel did a lot of illustrations and maps in here and I'm so happy to have an autographed copy of this book. But when she denotes Shipley Bakery Company and the Fayetteville Business College in that alley between the rent house and the, the station and the bakery and the vickers cleaners and all that, I just think, I grew up with Lord of the Rings being very popular and, and I don't, I don't remember Mordor. My husband had to remind me that Mordor was the place and that. I think there's some pizza companies named that. And I doubt that very few of our kids now know what Mordor is. Do any of you kids here know Mordor?
I do.
Yeah? But I would say to all of you kids out there, go get this book if you can and read about the history of Dixon. And though I like the idea of us being quirky and unconventional and I appreciate all the comments and all, too, I love history and can still smell that breath myself and very much support Alderman Farrell's suggestion that we go with Shipley Alley.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, Del?
I truly didn't, didn't have a, a strong opinion until I started getting quite a bit of Citizen input, just like Ms. Bass, who they feel connected by the Shipley and also the Shipley relative here. So I, I quickly started to lean toward wanting to name it. I felt like Shipley, Shipley Alley is perfect. And I, I appreciate Matthew's quirky touch to Fayetteville. And I'm, and I too am so happy to hear from a lot of young people. I truly am. But I'll be voting for Shipley Alley.
Okay. Anybody? Yes, ma'am.
So, thank you also. And I, I would say that I adore the Harry Potter series and have read the books and taught eighth grade and seen all the movies and it's fantastic series. And, and I, I, I really appreciate Ms. Carmen, you coming and sharing, you shared this with your students. And I think that's so important. And it made me think about how Diagon Alley, it, the people in Di, in Harry Potter feel connected to Diagon Alley because of the significance of the place in the story. And if you, you can take that and think about Fayetteville and think about Shipley or Bakery Alley has a similar effect on Fayetteville in its own history. And I think that that's where, actually, Diagon is a great suggestion and a, and a recommendation for Fayetteville to say, hey, choose names that are significant and have meaning for your community. And that's where I think that doing a Fayetteville historical tour and introducing young people to this community and getting connected to the history here and making it mystical and exciting is, is a really good thing to do. And, and so I will support Shipley Alley.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, Brenda?
Well, I, I can't add much to what everyone has said, because you've said it very well. But I, I think what Sarah said is, it really brought it home, that, that, you know, this is, this is what people that live here, and I'm a native of Fayetteville, it's what's important to us. And that's why I would, will support Shipley. But I also think that Diagon Alley is a cute name. And I, I mean, I, I appreciate Matthew's idea, but it just, if there wasn't a historical link to this alley, I think that might have been considered more strongly. But, but it really was. And if you look at the entrance, it's got bakery up there. I mean, it just, it just makes more sense to go with Shipley Alley. So I support that.
Okay. If there's not any other comments, I guess we'll be voting to either support or deny Diagon Alley first, right?
Yes. The amendment was to change it from midtown to Diagon.
Right. So I want to be sure that I've got that straight. Okay. If there's not any other discussions, Sandra, would you please call the room?
Gray?
No.
Fudra?
No.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tenet?
No.
Farrell?
No.
Adams?
No.
Lewis?
Nope.
The motion failed.
All right. Now we have Alderman Farrell. I believe you're gonna bring forward another motion.
Yes, Mayor, I would move to amend it, to, that we name this, as it came forward to us, to react to emergency situations, that the name be amended to Reed Shipley Alley.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to name the alley Shipley Alley. Is that correct? Okay. What discussion do we have from the council on that? I believe we pretty well heard that from the council.
Just want to say one thing.
Sure.
I just want to say that, you know, like I said, I support any name, including this one, that meets the 911 requirements. But I do want to say that I'm glad that we went through this process, because until then, it was on consent agenda for midtown.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on it being named Shipley? I think we. Okay, we'll bring it back to the council.
I hope all of you that have contacted us maybe for the first time, I hope you'll continue that conversation, because it was really nice to hear from, from people. So thank you.
Okay. If there's nothing else, Sandra, would you please call the room?
Gray?
Yes.
Fudra?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Okay. It's officially named Shipley.
Well, now, now we need to pass the resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're absolutely right.
We've passed the resolution.
May I have a motion, second, to pass the resolution? Any final comments on that? Sandra, would you please call the room?
Gray?
Yes.
Fudra?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Okay. Number three, RZN 11-3960, 1730 North Old Wire Road Appeal. An ordinance rezoning that property described in zoning petition RZN 11-3960 for approximately 8.60 acres located at 1730 North Old Wire Road from RSF 4, residential, single-family, four units per acre to NC Neighborhood Conservation, subject to a bill of assurance. I will entertain a motion to go to the third and final round.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to go to the third and final round. Sandra, would you please call the room?
Gray?
Yes.
Fudra?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 11-3960 for approximately 8.6 acres located at 1730 North Old Wire Road from RSF 4, residential, single-family, four units per acre to Neighborhood Conservation, subject to a bill of assurance.
Chairman, do you have anything?
I don't have any other updates, except that we do have a map tonight. I can show you the boundary of the property here. The property comes in, there's an existing drive here where it's accessed. We took the, a couple of members, several members of the council on tour last night and saw this. But the property comes here, accesses north, comes over south, and then makes that, that jog there. So that's the, that's the property boundary here. You can see at the last meeting, several members of this neighborhood off of Charlie were here to present concerns. This is the stubout to the property there. There's a stubout here from Ash Street. There's another stubout, I believe it's here, from Ramsey. And then the existing access to Old Wire Road, which is what we've talked about. Just as a reminder again, this is a request to rezone the property from RSF 4, which is single-family residential, four units per acre, to Neighborhood Conservation with a bill of assurance limiting the development of the property to single-family homes and a maximum of 50 dwelling units on this property.
Any other discussion from council, questions for chairman? Okay, I guess we'll take public comment. We will take public, public comments this time. Everybody gets one turn at the microphone unless an Alderman brings you back up. Please introduce yourself when you come to the, the podium. And keep your comments to the chair, please. Don't engage an Alderman and so.
Aubrey Shepherd, all that fits me, what you said, Mayor. This, this, as you know, is north of Mount Sequoia. And that land is the beginning of the real prairie area associated with the stream running through there. And it, I, I would say that it's gonna be very hard, what I see of Neighborhood Conservation so far. It's been in place, what, four years? Being used for four years or so, I believe. Neighborhood Conservation is on.
I know it was passed at your time, so it's.
The examples I've seen, and you can see some a few blocks from here to the south, there is nothing, they, there, in order to get the number of houses allowed by Neighborhood Conservation in an acre and have a driveway and maybe a garage or whatever, there's no true green space left. The prairie soil in all these places covered with red dirt. They dig out the black dirt if it's really down low and put a deep pack of red dirt. So this is, what would happen here is you would have more impervious surface. And you would not have soil left in yards or gardens. Now, some of the builders in these areas so far are trying to make little rain gardens. But these are not rain gardens that are in a natural state where the water could actually recharge the groundwater from that point, or recharge an aquifer, as it does in many places similar, and probably does in this area at this time. Am I too close to the mic? I'm sorry. Anyway, that would be my objection to Neighborhood Conservation. It's, it meets the need for infill, but it does not meet the stormwater needs. There's no way it will. If, if it's anything, unless all the houses are built on stilts, driveways are minimized, and the natural soil is somehow left under and around those places. The conventional construction sites that are not low-impact development will cause this to be another source of fast water going towards Illinois in the watershed of the Illinois River. And that will mean it's not as clean as it, as if it had been allowed to soak in. Anyone want to ask a question before I sit down? Quickly.
Thank you, Aubrey.
Thank you.
Who else would like to comment on this?
Hello, Mayor. My name is Michelle Hightower. I live at 1645 Charlie Avenue. And I very much oppose the rezoning of this property. The thing I had mentioned last time, and I'd like to just reiterate, is I'd like you to look at the entire property that Charlie Avenue covers, as well as all of the Street of Ash. And those two, two streets combined only have 49 homes. And when you look at that property, there's no way that that property would be compatible to the surrounding neighborhoods or would have density that is similar to their surrounding neighborhoods. And I think when the Planning Commission looked at it, they decided to deny the rezoning, because they didn't feel like that it's smart planning. That at this point, the planning, it does meet a lot of needs that we'd like to have in this city. It has the connectivity, it has the infill. So it's a good property to, to, to have houses be built on. But I think when you look at it, it just simply doesn't warrant changing it to a different status. Single-family is appropriate for where that is. Especially when we look at things like, this area is, there's a lot of concern about flooding with this area. There's a lot of concern about the traffic and the safety that's surrounding it. So I'm asking you to please maintain what the City Council, or I'm sorry, what the Planning Commission said when the Planning Commission looked at it and thought that it would not be a good property to rezone. And we would ask you, as those of us who are living in the surrounding areas, please keep it compatible with the density of where we live. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else?
My name's Scott Burton. I live at 1702 Charlie. And I'd just like to say that as a resident of Charlie Avenue for almost 20 years, I do want to state my opposition to the rezoning. The increased density of houses in this area, I think, will cause major difficulty in our neighborhood due to the increased traffic levels. I hope the council has had the opportunity to visit our street at the time of day when school begins and lets out, because Route School is right down the block. We have a tremendous high traffic of kids walking up and down our street. There's also extreme difficulty with making a left turn onto Mission Boulevard from Charlie Avenue, just because there's a blind spot and the curve in the road. And increased traffic and density is going to cause more problems there. Again, the chief concern I have really lies with the safety of the children on both Charlie and Ash Street. We do walk through Route School, you know, pretty much each and every day when there's school in session. You know, and we have a lot of people that come and park on Charlie at these times of day to drop off kids and pick up kids. Historically, we've had a tremendously large number of kids on our street. It's been a place where kids could play. We've had, you know, many, many kids skateboarding, biking, rollerblading, and doing things like that on our street. And I feel like the overall increase in density is gonna cause these traffic problems, which will, again, really hurt the potential safety issues for our kids. We also worry some about what it's gonna do to the property values. For those of us that own homes on Charlie Street that are in the 2,500 square foot to 4,000 square foot range, this is clearly something that will be very different from the nature of the houses in the community that we have here on Charlie Street. We certainly don't wish to see this very dense housing, you know, ultimately become student housing because of the increase in the traffic we'll see and potential, you know, decrease in the safety levels. So while there are several concerns that we've mentioned, flooding certainly is one that Michelle talked about that I haven't. You know, the primary one I have is for the safety of the large number of children that historically have used Charlie Street as a place to walk to and from school. I sincerely hope that the safety of these children will be strongly considered in any decision that's made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask, sort of can I ask you a question?
Sure.
On your concern about the traffic, do you think that's going to be twice a day? Or do you think that's gonna be, realistically I'm speaking, do you think it's gonna be twice a day or do you think it's gonna be all day?
I think with this type of density and the housing that we'll see, you know, it's gonna be throughout the day. The real concern, though, is when there's tons of kids on the street. And that would be primarily, you know, at times when school's out and when school is starting, you know, and when school lets out. So the density issue, though, is clearly a problem for traffic at all times. And that, that turn onto Mission, when you have to make a left turn, again, is a scary turn if you guys have had the opportunity to make that before. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you talk a little more about the effect on your property value that you think this will have?
Well, I just feel like the nature of our homes there, you know, they're generally, you know, we have a, we're probably an intermediate-sized home with 3,100 square feet or so. Just as you think about, if these are really, really, really small homes with no yards, you know, I'm just concerned that's putting something at that point, that close to Charlie Street, with a connection into Charlie Street, and especially if those become student housing in the long term, in the very long term. And I think that will have an impact upon housing values.
One more question. Do you think that if the houses were bigger than 3,100 square feet, it would have a negative impact on your property value?
No.
What if they built 5,000 square foot homes there instead?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
What if, what if it were the other way and, and large homes were built there instead? I'm, I'm just trying to understand the effect you have from your point of view.
Well, I, I think really, you know, a lot of it where there's a lot of heavy concentration of student housing for families, you know, it's just not as desirable a place to live.
Thank you.
My name is John East Adams. My husband Kyle and I live at 1630 Charlie Avenue. And we represented our family by writing a letter to our City Council, our Aldermen that represent our ward. And I am also, in combat, in opposition to this. And I hope that the council has heard the arguments from our neighborhood. It is a, it's a very safe, secure, kid-friendly neighborhood to raise children. And we've been there a long time. We've raised our families there. I hope you'll look at it from our point of view to say that when we bought our properties, we were protected at the time by the previous subdivision zoning that was put into place to create a home or a neighborhood that would be somewhat like what we're living in now. It wasn't that we purchased there with the intent of a neighborhood being changed or the zoning being changed to make it not conform to us. We were there and it was established with the neighborhoods around us in the hopes that that livelihood would be continued. And that's why it was done that way to begin with. But again, it's the safety, the traffic. And I hope all of you did take an opportunity to come to the neighborhood, because when you do see the traffic flow and the congestion and some of the issues that we have there now, it doesn't make sense to add more homes to the density in the neighborhood that you're, that they're proposing to do in order to help improve that problem now. So.
Hi. My name's Laura Lindsay. I live at 1616 North Charlie Avenue. I too am opposed to rezoning to our, to, from R4 to the conservation. Fifty houses on that small piece is not gonna help. It's, the, and the connectivity is where I know I It's, the, and the connectivity is where, I know I have a larger issue which you don't care about because Fayetteville loves connectivity and I get that. But I do have a child that, her birthday's today. She's nine. She got a new scooter. Okay. Put, that, she won't be able to ride it anywhere in the morning, in the afternoon, or after work because five o'clock, cut through to get away to Old Wire when Mission brags up. Morning, cut through if there's a school in session, if she wasn't in school. Or afternoon at three o'clock. You cannot put fifty houses on eight-point-six acres with two retention ponds and think that you're not going to add to the water problem and everything else. You're taking the green space and I don't see, personally, I don't see how you can put fifty houses there, but I'm sure the developer will argue that with the possibility of the letter on the rezoning of that property, does it not state that you could put upwards of eighty houses except for that, the letter of assurance is only asking for fifty?
Chairman.
The maximum would be fifty homes based on the bill of assurance that's been offered. That's correct.
Okay. So, regardless, you're going to affect our property values, you're going to affect our safety, and you're going to affect whether or not people, I mean, when we bought this in the subdivision, it was because the houses do look alike. If I wanted to live in an area that had those houses or that I knew that that was a possibility, we would have bought in a different area. The thing, if you, and I don't, I'm opposed of having another Ruskin Heights where you build, put the roads in and then there's nothing there. That doesn't help us either as a city. There's enough housing that you can put thirty-four houses there and we'll be fine. But fifty is a little ridiculous. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Amy Rosetti. And my husband and our two children, we live at sixteen fifty-seven Charlie Avenue. And we've lived there since nineteen ninety-nine. And the street appealed to us when we purchased our house because it was a quiet cul-de-sac. There were children on the street and there was room for our children in Route School. And we hope that someday that our house will appeal to another family in the same way. I think that there isn't really room for any development, given the traffic problems and the fact that the school is filled. So, to even entertain the number, increasing the number of houses that are, can be built on that property, I think would be unwise. There is existing infrastructure in the area, but I believe the infrastructure is over capacity. Um, the traffic does back up in the morning after school, in the evenings. And if you try to fall, to drive, um, from the west to the east on Mission shortly after the high school has been let out, the traffic that came from the high school is, accumulates even on that far away from the school because that is really the only way across town. When you try to take a left turn out of Charlie Avenue onto Mission, there's a blind spot. There's a big tree in the way. My daughter and I were in an accident. My van was totaled because I couldn't see and an oncoming car was speeding. Because when there isn't traffic in the area, there's a speeding problem. There's a drainage issue if you read the city plan. The city plan even says that the, a lot of the land in that part of the town is unsuitable for development because of the quality of the soil. So, it really doesn't make sense to build more there. The style of homes that the developers are talking about calls for streets and alleyways and very little space in between the houses, which will mean that there won't be very much green space in the area and basically too many houses on one piece of land. Thank you.
I'm Vince Masson Elliott, seventeen thirty-five North Charlie Avenue. And I live in that neighborhood and I have a very strong concern, not only what they've said previously, but mainly for the congestion of the traffic that flows through that area. If you come to our neighborhood and sit there and watch on Mission, it's just a constant flow of traffic. If we add additional fifty homes in there, that's going to bring in more traffic, especially if you open up that neighborhood to Old Wire. Uh, people on Old Wire now cut through Jordan to get to, uh, Mission and it, and I'm afraid for the, uh, well-being of the residents in that neighborhood, especially the young kids that play out in the streets and, and ride their bicycles. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Gary Sager. I live at sixteen thirty-three Charlie. And I'd like to comment, um, on the property values brought up by Alderman Adams. Um, I know that apartments and motels and hotels look really nice when they're new. They're attractive. It's something you want to be around. Uh, there's a neighborhood to the east of us that's mixed with, uh, single-family houses and apartments. And, uh, in the beginning, that was very nice. I alluded to apartments and, uh, I've been by there recently and, uh, the apartments, uh, all though maintained, have just lost their luster. And, uh, if I were a, uh, single, uh, family owner there in that area, I, I would think that area is undesirable now. That's my concern for this proposed development. Also, I'd like to, uh, comment on traffic. I was off Friday and I walked my daughter over to, um, Route School to visit some of her former teachers. And I was sitting there watching the traffic patterns and I noticed that, um, Ramsey, Charlie, Lunsford, and I think it's Eastwood to the west, uh, these are just alternate parking lots for Route School. My concern is if Ramsey and Charlie are opened up, we're going to have tr- traffic coming from the north that's going to use that as an avenue into that area and it'll be a drop-off and pickup point for the parents of Route School students. And it is now, it's aggravating, but I've had a child at Route School and I just tolerate it now, but I think it will be intolerable, um, once this is opened up. And, um, other concern I have, that area will be, uh, very dense up there. And anybody driving into that area, once they hit Charlie Street, Charlie Street's wider than most of the streets around there. It's a straight shot. That's going to be Charlie drag strip. And that's my concern. And, um, I hope you consider our concerns when you take your vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Andy Hightower. I live on sixteen forty-five Charlie. Uh, my com- my comments and point of view will be very similar to what's already been stated, so I'll keep it very brief. As a father of four, my primary concern is safety. I, I feel like, um, the proposed zoning that would allow fifty homes, I feel like fifty homes is, is an inappropriate amount of homes for that area. But, in terms of safety, fifty homes with the possibility of Charlie becoming a through street, fifty homes means that many more houses and therefore that many more cars. So, as a father of four, and when school's out or on weekends, we see this effect simply from people that think that is a cut-through. So, we see reckless driving up and down that, so we, up and down that street now. So, as, as with the potential for the street to become a real cut-through, um, as parents, we're very concerned about how that will affect, um, and, and the increase of traffic and, and so on and so forth. So, safety is our primary concern. To, to the, to the earlier comment on would larger houses matter? I believe they would. The larger the house, the more space they would take and therefore less traffic on the road. So, um, I, I'd just like to, just in closing, say it would be very easy for the council. We appreciate your consideration. It'd be very easy just to say business as usual and, and let's move forward with the zoning. But I just want to strongly urge you to, there's a lot of concerned people here. There's a lot of people that couldn't make it tonight that are equally concerned about safety and some of the other issues, um, that you've heard tonight. So, I just want to, um, strongly urge you to consider and, and listen and, and, uh, hopefully agree with, with our point of view. So, thank you for consideration.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Bunch. I live on Viewpoint Drive in Fayetteville. And I'm also on the planning commission in Fayetteville. Um, I wasn't at the meeting when this was voted on. And I support this rezoning for a variety of reasons. And, um, one of the things that this city has done in the past is it's made a commitment to try and limit suburban sprawl and encourage infill. I mean, it's in our, our twenty-thirty plan for the city. Now, I understand the neighborhood. I live over in that neighborhood, not on Charlie, but up on the hill, up above Route School. And I know what the traffic's like on Old Wire Road. I know what it's like on Mission Boulevard. And, you know, I come down Lunsford, you know, at the, at three o'clock in the afternoon and it's just bottlenecked with people trying to pick up their kids from school. So, I understand that this proposal to rezone this and, you know, infill this void that's there now can cause a lot of growing pains. But I would ask that you would consider it because there's, you know, the traffic issues, I would be lying if I said that the traffic's not going to increase on Charlie or Ash or Ramsey if this is developed. But with the proper measures, the proper layout of the streets, maybe a turn lane, some traffic calming measures, I don't think that that, that traffic going through those areas needs to be dangerous traffic. I think it can, you can kind of work with it. Um, also, one thing I'd like for people to consider is that, you know, several people have mentioned, uh, Route School. Is it density already? It's, you know, already full? Is that this type of development isn't necessarily going to appeal to just families with children that are going to be going to Route School. It's a perfect type of development for maybe a single person, you know, a young professional, a young family that doesn't have children yet, empty nesters, and people that would love to live in this area, um, you know, for a variety of reasons. You're close to all the amenities of, uh, crossover and forty-five intersection. There's a lot of empty nesters that would like to live in East Fayetteville. And there's just not the type of housing there for them now. And, um, as far as Route School, you know, with, someone else had brought up the issue of connectivity from the different subdivisions. If you have kids and you live on Ash, your, your kids really can't walk to Route School. Um, you know, if, if this is put in, you would have better connectivity to some of these, you know, areas to get to the school. Also, if you have children on Ash and they can walk to school, then maybe that takes two or three cars out of the lineup every morning and every afternoon. There are parents that are waiting to pick up their kids. Maybe, just maybe. Um, and also, school districts get redrawn too. And, uh, you know, sometimes those change the, the number of children in a school. As far as drainage goes, well, you know, right now, this is a field. And if this is developed, the standards that are required by this city are very, very exacting and it could actually improve the drainage in this area. And I'd also like to remind the neighborhood that their subdivisions were put in, in the nineties and I think Ramsey went in in the, I mean, I think, um, Ash was probably early to mid-nineties, Charlie was maybe around the mid-nineties. Ramsey was probably late sixties, early seventies. The standards were very different then. You could buy a piece of land and put twenty homes on it and, and you could do that feasibly. Um, now, the development, you know, you, you just have to look at the density now. And, and you can't put in, you can't justifiably put in a subdivision like the one on Charlie anymore. And, you know, right in the middle of town, you can't buy almost nine acres of land for a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand dollars. You know, so you, so that density is, is driven up because of the cost of the land. And, uh, you know, I know the, I know the neighborhood's really up in arms about this, but I think that there's got to be some way that the city council can look at this and, and not just, not just look at the neighborhood saying no, but also take into consideration that there is a person that lives on this land now. And she's lived there for thirty years or more and, and she just wants to sell her property. And she can't justifiably sell it for a few thousand an acre. It, it just has to, you know, it has to, you have to look at the zoning for that, that reason alone also. Um, and the compatibility, well, you know, again, you're, you're looking at neighborhoods that were built in the seventies and the nineties. And what was compatible then is, is maybe not going to be compatible now as far as, as that area goes. Um, so I'd just like to ask for you to consider both sides of this issue, uh, when you're considering rezoning this. And thank you very much for your time.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask you a question, please, Ms. Bunch? Did you say, had you been present, you would have voted for this?
I cannot vote for this because the lady that owns the land that wants to sell it is my aunt.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So, but.
But were you able to vote? Would, how would you have voted?
I, I would have voted for it. And, and the.
Hang on.
And the reason, you know, the reason I would have is because I, I would trust the city between the developer and the planners to work together with the neighborhood to try and make this the best development they possibly can. And, and, you know, I'd, I'd love the neighborhood not to encourage it. It's us against them. I mean, if I lived on Charlie and, and I had a field behind my house for fifteen or twenty years, you know, I think that would be, I, I'd be irritated too if someone wanted to develop it and I didn't know what was going in and it, you know, it's very threatening. And if I had kids and lived on Charlie, yeah, I would be worried about the traffic too. But I think that there's got to be some way that everybody can work together and work around this.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Clark. I really don't have a stake in this at all. I was just simply a citizen attending the meeting and, um, listening. I, I noticed two, two things that really stood out to me. The first being that a lot of the, um, concerns and issues with this, um, with this rezoning have to do with current conditions that wouldn't be affected regardless of the zoning change. For example, um, the huge tree that causes the difficult left turn. That tree exists today. The people parking on the street to drop off their children at Route School, that problem exists today. Will there be an increase in traffic? Most likely, um, looking at this plan, what I will see is now that the residents on Charlie or Ramsey or Ash will now have further options and a lot of that traffic from their streets will be displaced. So, a resident that lives on Ash won't be forced to necessarily pull out on, um, Old Wire. The other thing that really stands out in my mind is that a lot of their concerns have to do with their personal lifestyle choices. Not everyone needs a huge yard. Not everyone needs a three thousand square foot home. Not everyone has a child that will be riding a scooter in the middle of the street rather than their backyard. So, as we look to the future of Fayetteville, the future of housing trends, the future of what's right and green and makes economic sense, higher-density property is, is what we have to be looking at. That's what we have to be considering today. Things like the, um, the drainage issues. Well, with development comes improvements on infrastructure. With development comes using today's planning as opposed to old outdated planning from thirty years ago. So, based on the information I've gathered today, the things that I know of zoning development from being a real estate professional, I would say that, um, the zoning change makes sense so that this property owner can move forward with the next chapter in her life so that we can have more affordable, more attainable housing. That's what comes with building higher-density properties. And keep things moving along as opposed to, um, holding back for the sake of a street that, um, people have, obviously have become very comfortable on, um, and want to continue their way of life and quality of life, which is certainly important, but not to the detriment of others. Thanks for your time.
My name is Kyle Adams. I live at sixteen thirty Charlie. And I think everything has to do with your personal lifestyle. I mean, if you're sitting in our boat, in our boat, you're the same what? If you have kids, for safety, for whatever reason. As far as what, uh, people said before me, as far as people from Ash being able to walk to Route, they do. They walk down our street. There's a little cut-through down at the end of the cul-de-sac. All those kids from that street walk to school every day right by my house. So, that part is, is, uh, not true. They do walk down Charlie. Everything that you've heard, I mean, it, it's obviously your decision, but safety for our kids on our street is the utmost importance to us. It's not whether, uh, what's best for me. I, I can do what's best for me. My kids may not. My kids may not, their kids may not. They're young, they're out there playing in the street. Sometimes they're not supposed to be in the street, but accidents will happen. So, the safety part is the biggest concern for me. There are, excuse me, there are more concerns, but that's the biggest one for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Patricia Eaton. I live at 2731 East Hardy Lane. And I just wanted to let you know that, and maybe let these parents know here, that there maybe is another safety issue that they are not aware of. But there is a barn on this property, and barns seem to attract children. And children are often over there playing, sometimes with matches. And so I just wanted to let you know that it's not all safe having property located behind your house with, that for all practical purposes is still a farm.
Thank you, Pat. Anyone else? See, now I'll bring you back to the council. What discussions do we have now?
I have a question.
Yes.
For Jeremy. Okay. So, right now, it's zoned RMF4.
RSF4.
Oh, excuse me.
That's correct.
RSF4. And my question relates to the connectivity of the streets, so, and what exactly we're deciding on tonight, and whether or not that affects the streets. So, if this, if no action is taken, or we say no, or yes, or whatever, if we say no to this, the zoning remains RSF4. If someone goes in and wants to develop RSF4, four units per acre, tell me about the streets.
The same rules would apply whether it's zoned RSF4, RSF8, Neighborhood Conservation, any of those, any of those districts.
So, it doesn't affect whether or not the streets connect or not. Our vote tonight is about the zoning for the, really, the number of units that can fit on there. And also, it's a form base, which means the setbacks are different. The setbacks create a situation where it's more walkable.
That's correct. The Neighborhood Conservation District was created when we did our downtown master plan as a primarily single-family district to recognize that we have a lot of single-family districts really on the fringe of our downtown, in the Washington Willow, off Huntsville. That was actually Mashburn. Off of Huntsville was the first property that came forward for the Neighborhood Conservation type zoning by petition. And so it was really to recognize those types of neighborhoods and allow new neighborhoods to be developed in a certain fashion. I think if you saw this property develop as Ash, Charlie, and Ramsey, and this property altogether, all the streets would have been connected anyway, much like a lot of our neighborhoods. They would have all been connected. This, at this point, it's, it's almost like another phase of the development that's never been connected up, and that was anticipated. The streets were aligned in order for, in these older neighborhoods aligned for this property to be able to connect through to those. That was a development decision based on those ordinances today. We have similar, if not stronger, ordinances about connectivity within our codes today. So, it's really, that's more of a development question. The zoning, what you're really looking at is compatibility. In this particular case, it's the same use, it's single-family use. It's a higher density, so that's something you certainly should consider. It could be higher, but the applicants have offered a bill of assurance to limit it. I think it's at 5.8 as opposed to higher density at Neighborhood Conservation would generally allow. And so those are the types of considerations that you have with a rezoning request.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody? Yes, Matthew.
Well, I'm going to vote for this, and I'll tell you why. Half of it is because of what was just talked about, the connectivity that's going to happen regardless of the decision that we make tonight. And I think that it's the connectivity that's going to bring the majority of the traffic increase, not the density itself. Connecting those streets up is just going to make new opportunities, as been pointed out by a lot of the speakers here tonight. The reason that that might not be safe is probably because of the way that roads like Charlie or Ash were built back according to the old standards. They were built to be very wide. We simply don't do that anymore because it creates a safety problem, the width of the streets themselves. So I think we've learned that lesson, and I'm sorry that it's still in effect here, but regardless, the connectivity's going to happen anyway. The second part is, you know, they say there's two things. Every community hates sprawl and density. And here, I just don't think the change in density is radical. You're still talking about single-family uses. We're not talking about townhomes, or apartments, or high-rises, or commercial activity. It's nothing like Ruskin Heights, which had all of those things. This is still single-family next to single-family, and there's absolutely no data that shows small houses next to large houses decreases property values, especially in areas that are within a quarter mile of a popular elementary school. So that's why I'll vote for it. I think that for the infill reasons and some of the other reasons that were stated tonight, it's important to consider, and given the context of the situation with the connectivity and the relatively very minor increase in density, I think it's justified.
Rhonda Dibbuck.
I am going to vote for it, too, and I'd like to say why. I did some reading from some land use law students, one particularly from Berkeley, that talked about how the reason these Neighborhood Conservation models have become popular is because they were created to, to help with new construction, to improve what might happen otherwise. And there are lots of cities in this country where it has proven to be a fact that by, by doing this, we have a better plan in the long run. But I also want to say that I do believe that homeowners of smaller homes are very likely to keep up the values of their homes. Some of the most well-kept and cared-for homes I know of are small homes. I built my home next to a rental house that's a very small house, where the couple who lives there take very, very good care of their home. So, it didn't, doesn't bother me at all to live next to a rent house. And I also believe that the traffic problems we are dealing with in Ward 4, a church being built, has created a very, very serious traffic problem for some of the homeowners there. The church is in and out several times a week with huge numbers of traffic, to the point that we have to have traffic patrol and control there. And so I don't believe that just smaller homes is, building smaller homes is going to cause your traffic problems. I believe there could be other things that could cause traffic problems, too. And I'm sorry that you disagree with me on that, but I know that we are dealing with some serious traffic problems caused by, by church. That's a fact. And so I'm going to vote for this. Thank you.
Bobby.
Yeah, I just, you know, trying to understand what you all are thinking about, I do. I mean, I, there's an uncertainty there, but I go to Jeremy, our planner, and please understand that the city spent a lot, went to a lot of time and money to come up with plans to mold this city. And one of the basic concepts there was connectivity. I'd just like to ask Jeremy, Jeremy, and everybody was all for it. Everybody said connectivity is great, infill is great, unless one thing happened. Jeremy, have we ever had a connectivity situation that you recall that was welcomed by the people on either side of it?
No. I think that, in our office, the saying is that Phase 7 of a subdivision's going to be opposed to Phase 8 because they simply don't want that next phase to occur because of the same, the very same issues that we're talking about. Mr. Marr made a good point. To put it in perspective, the Washington Willow District, which maintains high property values, is about the same density, if not higher, than what's being proposed today. And all of the streets there are connected. It was laid out in a grid pattern. It disperses traffic well to arterials, Highway 45, which is Mission, in the same location, connects all those neighborhoods in the Washington Willow District. It's six to eight units per acre, so it's a very comparable type of density as being proposed in this particular application, too.
See, I would, I don't know this for certain, but I would think that there would probably be apprehension if it was just going to be RSF4 coming in there, and there was going to be connectivity. So, I don't, the density, I don't think is a really weighing factor. I spent quite a bit of time out there looking around, and I drive this road every day. I don't have children going to school there, but I observe the speed limit every day when I'm down there. And I've been a resident of this city for a long time, and people have been parking on those side streets ever since I can recall. But I hope that I'm, I hope my observation serves me as correct. When we talked about Ramsey and Jordan, I think that that's going to help a little bit. I don't think it's going to hurt. I think it's going to help. And I think there's going to be twice a day, it's going to be in the morning and in the afternoon, where, I don't care how many streets we have along there, there's going to be people queuing up when you have an elementary. It's not only Root School, it's any elementary school you go to. So, I just, I guess it's unfortunate, but we spent an awful amount of money to come up with the best ideas that we could, and connectivity and infill were two of those things. And that's what's before us tonight.
Okay. Just.
I do have kids going to not that school, but a school down the road, and drive that road every day like you do, Bobby. And I can tell you that when we bought the house that we live in now, we first looked around Root, where my wife went to, went to elementary school, and we thought how cool that would be. And to be honest with you, there weren't a whole lot of places to buy. We looked on Charlie, and we looked at a lot of different places on Mount Sequoia, and there's a lot of people that would love to live in East Fayetteville. There's just not that many places to live. There's reasons for that. I think we do a pretty good job of, and do we, do we do the best we can with our schools. I can tell you, it worries me to death every time I drive by Root during school hours, the same as when I drive by Vandergriff, and the same as when I drive by Butterfield. There's a lot of kids and a lot of cars, and not a whole lot of room. And I really respect a lot of the people in these neighborhoods, especially a few on Charlie. And I hate having to do this. I really do. But there's a lot of reasons to do it. When you talk about the safety issue, recently at Butterfield, the neighborhood group around there asked me to come out, and Bobby and I looked at it, and they said, "You've got to do something about the traffic of the kids that are, that are walking on Catherine, coming out of the back of Butterfield through the park. It's just, it's horrible. Somebody's going to get hit. The speeding is terrible. There's not any crosswalks. We need more help." And it was really pretty rewarding, I think, in seeing just in the last few weeks, we're not there yet, but we've got crosswalks going in, we've got the police chief who personally did some oversight on, on speed control, and they're going to, they've got some ideas on doing that. So I know that, that if the issues come up, and I think that they might on Charlie, I do think there's ways that we can go at it, and I do think there's ways that we can help it. And the reason I know that is because it's exactly what's going on now on Catherine over by Butterfield. Same type of situation. There's a cut through right there. There's kids walking all over the place. There's people parked everywhere picking up their kids. And I absolutely understand, living on a cul-de-sac. I live really close to a cul-de-sac, and I know someday that street is going to be built, and it's going to connect 45 right into my neighborhood and go right by my house. I know it's going to happen, and I'm not going to be happy about it. And I'm going to stand up there, and I'll probably say the same exact things, and I'll be worried sick about it. But at the end of the day, when it happens, we'll take the steps necessary that we need to take. The fact that there's a big plot of land right there in East Fayetteville still shocks me that that hasn't been bought and built. I'm surprised there's not apartments there. I'm surprised there's not houses there that are totally unattainable, 99% of the people, except for those 1 percenters. But the fact is, this development, it's not going to be 50 houses. It's going to be developed in a pretty decent way. Those, the people on this council that know a lot more about streets and connectivity and drainage and all that, all that stuff than I do, have made some good points about how a lot of it makes a lot of sense. And it's not going to be perfect, and I do not like doing it. But I do think right now it is the best thing, and so I'll be going for it.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. There's not any other comments. Sandra, would you please call the road?
Gray?
Yes.
Bedro?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hetty?
Yes.
Tennet?
Yes.
Farrell?
Just want to make sure this we're voting for the appeal.
Have you voted yes?
Yes, and for the zoning to Neighborhood Conservation.
Yes.
With the bill of assurance.
Yes. I should explain it.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you all. All right. The next item we have tonight is number four. Hilton Garden Inn Tree Preservation Area Modification. Resolution to vacate about 1/10 of an acre of a tree preservation easement to be mitigated by the planting of 29 large species trees and developing a lot utilizing low-impact development standards, I believe. Now. Oh.
Just as a reminder, this is a request to vacate approximately 4,100 square feet of tree preservation area on Hilton Garden Inn, submitted by Jorgensen and Associates. And staff doesn't have new information on this present, but I'm here for questions. We did, Sarah and I met with the engineers, and we had a really good meeting there, and I don't know if you want to talk about that.
Sure.
Jorgensen, you want to add something?
Yes, sir. Thanks for y'all's time tonight. I do have a little bit of new information. We did have the opportunity to meet with Sarah, and
Thank you again.
Today, I did go to the adjacent property owners to the north who own those apartments, and they have an existing drainage problem. And we're going to work together with them to expand the capacity of that swell. And right now, what we're going to do is remove that curb so that we're sheet-flowing the runoff into this new swell. And this will reduce the capacity we need on the stormwater quality basin, which will in turn allow us to have more room to try to save the existing trees within that easement. It doesn't really change the request to vacate the tree preservation easement because we need that mobility to get in there and work around it and maintain the property. But I do think that after that meeting, we got a chance to, you know, and this has just all happened today, I had a chance to talk to Glenn Newman, Steph, engineer. He doesn't have any problems with working in that swell because there's some existing manholes, and we were worried about utility conflicts, but we think that we can work that out. Just some numbers, because it kind of makes sense for me to talk about numbers on stuff like this, but this particular development needs 13 trees to meet parking requirements. With the new rain gardens and stormwater quality basins, we have to plant four trees for those. And we'll have to have 18 shrubs and 26 small species shrubs, and 15 right-of-way trees. That basically comes down to 32 trees are required at a minimum. When this thing's said and done, we're going to be planting 133 trees. We're not only going above and beyond four mitigation, but due to the geometry of the layout of the tree islands, we're adding more trees than necessary. As an option on the north, we're going to have a vegetated buffer instead of a privacy fence, which is going to be nice because it works well with the development to the west, which is the same property owner. And part of the reason we're able to plant more trees than we typically could is because this hotel is owned by the same development to the south and to the west. So, we're going to basically give the property to the south, the existing hotel, a little bit of facelift with more trees around it. Right now, it's not, it has some opportunity to plant more trees. So, I know that it's not easy to ask for vacating any type of tree preservation easement, but I think that this is something that is good because we can guarantee that we can have clean stormwater. And not, you can't always guarantee the livelihood of these trees. Some of the trees did take a hit during the high storm. I was walking campus today, and some of those, some of the real nice big trees on the, let's see, north side, I saw them taking it down. I don't know if it was like a 42-inch pine, but I mean, it, you know, the trees are susceptible to Mother Nature, and these are no exception. And I know that it's not protocol to take trees out, but this is an opportunity to take these trees out, plant more, and add some nice low-impact development features that will offset this. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
What questions do we have?
I would just comment and say that, and thank you again, Blake. I really enjoyed the meeting. And also, one of our members of the Environmental Action Committee attended, and our new urban forester attended as well. And it was, it's really informative, helped me understand a little bit. The background is that when you look at the slope of the property, the existing low area is where the tree preservation area is. And so my question was, why aren't we just using the existing tree preservation as the And so my question was, why aren't we just using the existing tree preservation as part of that stormwater management? And so that's the question with which I began the conversation, 'cause I just didn't understand what the, the plan was. And so, but I, and I, and also looking at, because of the, when you're doing low-impact development, you really do, what's the existing slope of the property? Can you minimize grading, which is what they're doing? And they are putting one of the stormwater treatment areas in that existing low area, but they're adding other, two other features. And with that new idea where they're gonna capture additional stormwater from the other site, is another way to increase connectivity and treating more, which is great. And so it's looking at the whole system together, and that's, so I really appreciate it. And I would just say that in '07, before I was on the council, I was doing workshops for low-impact development, and, and the Jorgensen and Associates were some of the first engineers that were curious about this type of design. And I wanna give them credit for really trying to learn and understand it, and so thank you.
Questions? Public comment? What public comment do we have on this?
This is the property, I believe, that's north of the Holiday Inn Express. And the natural flow there goes catty-cornered across there, directly to that grove of trees, as was said. And I would envision anything built and paved would be outside that natural area, which goes down there and spreads out. Those few trees are in there. This would be low-impact development. Something they have to engineer and create is not truly low-impact development. This, this is the point that we're missing. You know, people come up with ways of, of building rain gardens, and doing all kinds of changing the soil, and building this little patch, not as big as this space between your desk here, and routing what water they can there and hoping it works. But what really would've worked was to leave a little more space and the natural soil there. And it's, you know, engineered green space is likely not to be true green space. I'm not saying it's impossible. And where there's no good soil for it to soak in, then creating something is good. But anyway, this, this is mounted wet prairie, just what the city's spent a lot of money mitigating in creating, recreating wet prairie, or truly wet prairie at Woolsey. And we had to do that because we destroyed some land, just like where these trees are, for the sewage treatment plant. And I haven't read a core report on this particular piece of property, but they wouldn't be able to deny, if done, that it is, excuse me, seasonal wet, seasonal mounded wet prairie. And it's what Joe Neal talked about in, was it in 2000, when we were going over Coles' property, and not the Coles itself, but the nearby Wilson Spring Prairie land, which now is finally being tried to restore to prairie status, as far as vegetation. But these parcels we're talking about tonight are exactly what we created at Woolsey to imitate. And that's just a little tiny one. I don't know why anybody would wanna pave near it or drive around it. It'd be a nice place to walk. I did it the other day. I made 100 and many pictures and put them on Flickr from that site. And I put a few of them on, on a blog or two, and I put some video about discussions of it. Short take, that's, I think airing this week about it, and showed some of those pictures. Because we're slipping toward what happened because of the Coles debacle. I know that the tree ordinance was weakened, revised to allow more mitigation, but if we do it in absurd amounts on every piece of property, the one we were looking at earlier, I don't know how we were, we were, what they were gonna do with the trees if they do, they put conservation in that area. You could see there were prairie trees on that land, most of it was prairie. But anyhow, no, this, it would be cheaper for them just to leave it natural down that center area. You can see the, the route that, from the Holiday Inn that goes directly down, from their parking lot, down to the swale along the road, service road. And it's eroded. It's, it's got some little willow trees trying to grow up in it. But like a lot of such places, people who, you know, Illinois Watershed Partnership spent a lot of time in Springdale and, and north of here, and other towns and rural areas, planting willow trees. There was an event a few years ago where they demonstrated, or three years ago, I think, demonstrated the, how you would drill a hole, and you, you don't even have any roots on that willow tree. You just jam it down there, and roots come from the, where the, the stems and leaves grow. And so you can put that tree out beside the stream and take advantage of the water underground at the same level as the stream. And this works. But we're trying to restore that kind of little ditch to stream status, or at least land, a piece of water and land that can support some kind of life. And these mowed places that look like hayfields, and, and they have to water them and fertilize them, and put all that stuff into the, into the watershed. That's not something we should be, with all the things that we've passed in the last few years here, you guys have passed, and we've supported. This, this is real inexpensive way to control that stormwater. And so, please, do your homework about this a little more if you're thinking of voting for it, because this would be the easy way. And I've got not only my own photos on there, but a particularly good article that came from Florida Environment's blog. And they, they're talking about restoring, you know, the battle for the water. The developers, one of the things they've noted is that the same people, just a, almost the same generation of people who were developing South Florida are now trying to get more water sent. They drain the water out so they could build on these wonderful places that were natural wetland. And now they're trying to figure out how to get more water sent from North Florida to allow them to do the things they need to do with water, which is, you know, like, continue to live. And so, anyway, I'll shut up. But this is a little tiny piece of wetland habitat, and it's certifiable if, if it were somebody's yard. And so, please consider asking them to continue planning. I, I, I know the Jorgensen folks, and I do like them, and I appreciate their concern and doing it right. But let's, let's hope that it could be a little, a little, go a little further before it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'm gonna bring you back to the council. Sarah?
I would like to just validate that, Aubrey, that this is exactly the type of thing that I was thinking of when we met, and I completely agree. The difficulty is, in this place, is, as the council member, so you're thinking about, this plot will be developed. And so how can we do it the best we can with the least amount of impact? And when you put development on that property, you increase the amount of flow off the property, which means you have to account for more flow in different areas. So the current place, low area, is, is not able to handle all the additional flow that a cemented roof, a cemented parking lot or roof will cause. So they're adding two additional places to deal with that water. And in order to manage all that water, they have to amend the soil to get more water to soak into the ground and recharge the groundwater, so it will seep out into our streams, and we'll still have streams. So it's, it's this balance between how do you manage the development, and also manage your water, and also maintain some habitat, and so trying to arrive at that. It's a difficult, it's difficult. But it, but I think that this is a good opportunity for our engineers, our contractors, our, meaning our community's engineers, and our city engineers, and the city's contractors, to learn how to not run over amended soil, so it compacts, 'cause it can't be compacted, how to design stormwater facilities that do allow water to soak into the ground. We don't have that opportunity yet. This is, this is also a way to educate that industry about how to do this type of design.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'll just say, thank you to Alderman Lewis for taking the time to do that and going to the trouble. We thank each other a lot up here, but it's a pleasure to serve as someone who takes the time to go out and meet. And I really appreciate the education that we've gotten through this. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a resolution before us.
Need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion on it? Sandra, would you please call the robe?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hettie?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is Bellefonte Gardens Pre-Preservation Area Modification. Resolution to approve modification of the tree preservation area in Bellefonte Gardens Development to shift about one-half acre of tree preservation from area Lot 1 to Lot 4. Okay.
Mayor, we'd like to ask that this item be tabled to the second meeting in January on the 17th, to give the current owners of this property and the joint property an opportunity to meet and discuss.
Okay, so we have, we have a, need a motion in a second to take?
Second.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second to table, correct? Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Seventeenth, excuse me, did you say seventeenth, Don?
The second meeting, seventeenth.
January seventeenth.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to table to the 17th. Any other discussion on that? Sandra, would you please call the robe?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hettie? Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
We don't usually comment on the table, but if you want me to take some of your comments. Okay, I've been requested to take some public comment on this. Alderman Farrell seemed to think there was someone wanting to speak on this.
Sir, did you have some comment on that? Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, you're welcome. All right, number six, amend 50.40 rates for services. An ordinance to amend 50.40 rates for services of the Fable Code by enacting a new subsection B6 to charge 95 cents per month for multifamily unit for recycling services when offered. This was left on the first reading, I'm turning motion to go to the second reading.
So moved.
December.
We have a motion in a second to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the robe?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hettie? Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
An ordinance to amend section 50.40 rates for services of the Fable Code by enacting a new subsection B6 to charge 95 cents per month per multifamily unit for recycling services when offered.
Okay. David, you have anything new?
David Jorgensen, Utilities Director, simply establishing a fee for the new service that we have for the apartment recycling, trying to cover the cost of that service.
Council, do you have any questions? Yes?
I just want to restate that I'll be very interested in how this is, it's purported to pay for itself, by and large. But I'll be very interested in seeing a report, or as best we can do, in the latter part of this year. And I'll be aggravating the chief's staff.
I don't think you'll have enough data to have it by the end of the year, but we'll get it back sometime.
Well, we're, you know, point in time type deal.
You will give us till that point in time. All right, one of the things we have in the council. Do you have any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring you back to the council.
Maybe we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the robe?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hettie?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
An ordinance to amend section 50.40 rates for services of the Fable Code by enacting a new subsection B6 to charge 95 cents per month per family unit for recycling services when offered.
Any final comments from the council on this?
I'm just really glad that we're trying to get more opportunities to recycle in the apartments.
Folks, we talked, we have, Sarah.
A while, long, you know, we've been trying to figure out how to do that, so this is a good opportunity to do that.
I totally agree. We've talked about this apartment recycling for a long, long time. Okay. Any final comments from the council? If none, Sandra, would you please call the robe?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hettie?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you, council, very much. All right, we're about to go to new business. Does council want to take a break? You wanna keep riding on trucking?
Keep going.
All right. New business, RZN 11-3971, Bestway Street and Hollywood Avenue. An ordinance to rezone that property, describe rezoning petition, RZN 11-3971, approximately 25.35 acres, located at the end of Bestway Street and Hollywood Avenue from C2 Thoroughfare Commercial to RMF 12 Residential Multifamily, 12 units per acre. Kit?
Be it ordained by the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zone classification of the following striped property from C2 Thoroughfare Commercial to RMF 12 Residential Multifamily, 12 units per acre, as shown on exhibits A and B attached her to and made a part here of. Section two, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the official zoning map the City of Fayetteville reflects the zoning change provided in section one.
Oh, sorry. Staff?
This is a 25-acre tract located just south of the Hollywood Fire Station, off of Hollywood and the dead end of Bestway, which accesses from Futral. The current property, the property is currently zoned C2 Thoroughfare Commercial. You'll notice on your maps, however, that all of the, really the prime frontage on which commercial development would potentially be developed is encompassed by town branch, floodplain, floodway, streamside protection zone. So it's really not developable in any, any form or fashion. This particular property owner is looking to rezone the property to RMF 12, which is our residential multifamily, 12 units per acre zoning designation, that would allow for multifamily development on the remaining portion of the property, primarily to the east of the creek. As you can see, there are two streets that stub out to this property that would likely be connected, as well as our master trail plan has a connection in this location. The intent, as we understand, is to, is for student housing development. This is our urban center designation on our future land use plan, which does support a higher-density type of residential district. Water and sewer is available to the site, and the planning commission voted in favor, nine to zero, to rezone the site to RMF 12, and staff is supporting that request.
Brandon?
Is page 40 of, page four of 20 the only map we have?
I can bring up an aerial if you'd like.
There's one, 18 of 20, too.
18 of 20? I, I, am I figuring where this property is properly? It's the part that, that, well, now I've lost that map. Let me get back to the map I had, so I can...
If you're heading south of Futral, there by the red roof inn, I believe.
Okay, so this is just south of those.
South of that. That's correct.
Okay, that's what I thought, where at one time there was some talk about a water park.
That's correct.
Yeah, remember that.
Somebody brought that up to me the other day.
But anyway, so you're telling me none of that property on the west side of the creek is developed by the...
Every, every bit of that is actually in floodway or floodplain, along that, along that west side.
I mean, this map I'm showing does not distinguish what, okay. So what area are we talking about that would be, how much acreage are we talking about?
It's a 25-acre tract, and that area to the west is about eight acres. So at least a significant portion of the site that's still developable for what they'd like to do. The western portion, which is really, like I said, it's along that frontage of Futral, isn't, isn't really developable for really kind of any commercial or multifamily.
But we're rezoning, that would be included in this?
That's, that's, that's part of the rezoning request, because it's all one parcel, apparently. It's all one legal description owned by the same family.
You know, I'm saying it's not developable, 'cause I'm looking at the, the red line, is that the, I'm looking at this color one, is that the indication of the floodway?
That's correct.
Well, if you look at that hotel, that's already built there, that was built... Well, if you look at that hotel, that's already built there, that was built in the floodway?
Part of that probably is, actually. It was developed long enough ago that those regulations weren't in place. A portion of it is just floodplain, and the creek actually goes underground. It's, it's in a culvert.
Well, you can build on floodplain, right?
That's correct. That's correct.
So I, I'm just concerned about adding any more multifamily on, on, you know, Futral or off of five forty. I voted against the property that was rezoned across the, owned by Lindsay, and, and which recently has, you know, gone into apartments now, but I really feel like we need to keep all of this, if possible. Wait a minute, I voted the other way, didn't I? Now that I'm thinking about it. But I think this needs to be, remain commercial because this is a two-way. This is not just a one-way here. So I, I wish there was some way we could just vote for the part that's, you know, doesn't face Futral.
That that you can build on.
Well, okay, if you say you can't build, if you say you can't build on it, I guess we can't build on it. So all that's going to remain like it is now.
It's, that page eighteen of twenty probably shows it best because you can actually in the aerial photograph see the creek in the, in the aerial. It meanders through there and then heads underneath the interstate, and then that large drainage that the highway department's been working on to put the new on-ramp on, that's all part of that same creek. So that creek there, all on the western side is, that's the, that's actual location of the creek.
Okay, thank you.
Well, everybody's in a big hurry tonight on anything, so what else do you all discuss on?
I would like.
No, we're not. There's any concern, you know.
I asked this, I have a question. I asked this at agenda, but the RMF twelve is one of our form base.
That's correct. All of our multifamily zoning districts require, have a build-two zone and have a certain percentage that's required to build along the street. In this particular case, it wouldn't, it would not be Futral because it's not a buildable area unless the creek were put into a culvert, which is obviously against what we want to do. So that would likely be Bestway and Hollywood as part of their, their street frontage.
Any other questions, Chair? Mayor?
On our future land use map in the city plan, is any of the frontage along Bestway and Hollywood indicated for mixed use or commercial use?
Along Bestway and Hollywood, it's, it's called urban center, which essentially allows for multiple uses. It could be commercial, it could be multifamily, higher density type multifamily, it could be any of those. The area that we've been talking about west of the creek is all considered natural. So in our, a natural area, in our future land use plan that was adopted, city plan twenty thirty, it shows that no longer is commercial, it shows it as a natural area to be preserved in its existing state. So the urban center area is really concentrated to the east of that.
Well, that doesn't, I'm concerned that the commercial uses by right would be removed from those, from the areas fronting those two streets. I don't really know how I fall one way or the other at this point. I think that the rezoning that's proposed is probably a better use than what's, how it's zoned now. I'm not sure it's the highest in best use. I don't know, I guess I just want to think about it a little more.
Yeah.
I'm good. I'm going too. I'm just making sure if I was done. Okay, anybody ever take public comment? What public comment do we have?
It's the applicant now.
Oh, sorry, you're absolutely right. We have the applicant. It's George. Nice to see you, Blake.
Yeah, Blake Jorgensen with Jorgensen Associates, here with Ramsey Ball. He represents the owner. And we understand how you may, I mean, it's, it's one of those pieces of property that does have frontage, but it's been marketed as C two for quite some time, and due to the floodway, the floodplain, you're not going to have any visibility. There's basically essentially eight acres right there that, it's, I mean, it's a major swath of significant trees. And I know a few minutes ago I was up here talking about vacating tree preservation easements, and now I'm saying we need tree preservation easements, and this is where it's going to be. But this truly is, it's kind of like the, the perfect place because it really is where all the significant trees are. Obviously, with the streamside protection ordinance, we wouldn't be able to get into that property anyways. And roughly, the canopy required for about twenty-five acres, you need twenty-five percent, it's around six some acres. So we're going to have adequate tree preservation met just for that. And as far as commercial uses, it just hasn't happened. They've tried to sell it, but, but having multifamily use in there will spur commercial uses to the north and to the south. We're doing another development on the Love Box property where we're laying out the multi-use trail, and we're making, you know, an effort to make the connection between this Hollywood property and the Love Box property so that, that future trail, the connectivity there is, is kind of, they coexist. And so there is, it's hard because we're looking at one piece of land, but being involved with developments around that area, we've had, this, for us, we've personally had numerous people come to us and say, what can we put in there? A lot of commercial fell through, it just didn't happen. Not a commercial expert, but for some reason, they couldn't make the yield work. They couldn't get the visibility they needed to market the commercial uses. And we think that, once we worked with Jeremy, we sat down and said, what can we put in there? RMF twelve is a, it's not the highest density. And if you're looking at the overall tract of land, you're not getting a full yield out of the full purchase of the land. But at the same time, it's a, it's a, it's a good zone that we think is going to work well for Fayetteville. And knowing the future plans around the developments to the south and north, I think it's going to work real well. If there's any questions you guys have, I'd certainly be happy to try to answer them.
What you said, that residential development may stimulate other kinds of activity to the north and south, that's exactly why I made the comment I did, that was a little uneasy doing a unilateral use on this property. And I think what you said too applies to the property to the east, because if you look at the Love Box property, I think that's an indication of a trend, that whole area moving away from industrial uses.
Right.
I would be one hundred percent completely at ease voting for a rezoning that would allow the same kind of residential uses at the same density if it retained the same kind of mixed use by right for commercial activity, even if it wasn't going to be used with the current property owner and the current development down the road. Did you guys consider something like neighborhood services or community services?
I think that, you know, this is one of those properties that there wasn't a point in beating around the bush. There's been some properties where we may have said, yeah, we'll do downtown general, and then it was all student housing. There's no reason to name any particular ones, but this is one that we knew that they wanted to be specifically for student housing. And on the Love Box, we do have student housing, but on the north, we already have, you know, some conceptual stuff for commercials. So it, it's one of those things that we knew from the get-go on other properties where if you did have mixed use, it was going to work and be built into it. On this one, it was simply to get the yield they needed out of the land that was left over outside the floodplain. They just knew that it was going to end up being a multifamily. Okay, yeah, sure.
I'm Ramsey Ball. I'm with Coggers International. I represent the buyer of the property. And the difference with this property and the Love Box property is that this doesn't have any frontage on Martin Luther King. It's behind, off, off the, the frontage. The frontage that's on the interstate is, is the floodplain and floodway. And so really, it is, I think, an appropriate use for a single type of development back because it's already, you, you won't get commercial uses back into the, to the property. It is a very low density, lowest impact, I think, that you could have on that property is this type of development. MF twelve is, is a low unit, it's a down zoning. You're taking it from a higher density C two zoning down to an MF twelve zoning. The only lower zoning that you could have for it would be for a single-family residential. And if you did that, no, no one wants to live by the interstate or, or in, in that particular. It's not, it's not a good area for a single family. It's a great area for, for a multifamily for this type of development. So I think it's very appropriate land use and hope that you guys will support it. If you have any questions about the, the use or anything else that I can tell you, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Listen, yes, Brandon.
Well, I just want to say after looking at, finally finding the right map and really understanding there's not going to be development there on five forty or Futral. I think what you said is actually, absolutely right. There probably isn't a better use for it, and I would like to see it downzoned from C two. So I probably will support this.
Thank you.
I have one more public comment. This, is this still open?
Sure.
We, you know, this has been in the works for quite a while, and, you know, we've, we've received no phone calls. There was one property owner to the north, he said, yeah, that's good, I'm glad because that's going to stimulate my business. That's all he said. And this was slightly, it was supposed to be on the December sixth hearing. And I know it, just one of those things that fell through the cracks, and here we are, the December twentieth, and getting later into the year, and we're not asking to expedite anything, but if, just knowing that it's been on, it's been public for quite a while, there's been no comment, no questions. So I just wanted to say that just it helps make your vote a little bit easier. Does that make sense?
Maybe we need to wait just a little bit longer.
It's Christmas.
Tis the season. Yes. Okay, it's George, are you ready? Is that it?
Yes, sir.
All right. What public comment do we have?
Folks, Sandra, we started working on the Enduring Green Network plan that council approved to be part of the city twenty, twenty or whatever year they, twenty-five, I don't know. Anyhow, so that was one of the places we put as habitat for the Enduring Green Network through that part of town that comes all the way down. The World Peace Wetland Prairie and, and Bennett Poots Prairie and so forth. They're connected by the railroad right away, actually. And the railroad right away goes into Love Box property. That's why the railroad was there for years hauling there, actually trains used to go there and pick up their material before trucks took over. And they haven't in a few years, but the tracks are there to not many years ago. But anyway, that right away should be a, I think, it may be part of the market, it's part of the trail right away. But yes, I did speak at the planning commission about this because of the, I'm thrilled to know that they own that land across the stream, which is the west arm of the town branch of the west fork of the White River along the interstate, interstate right away, and that those trees will be saved. But if you look at it, you'd know that, that is floodplain and, and apparently it's been recognized as such. I'm surprised that the portion south of the end of Hollywood Avenue is not always, already designated as wetland and floodplain because it's, as more things develop out on, for instance, more things before you get to Weddington, before you go down the hill, any, any water that comes off of there along the interstate and the detention pond and all the hills around, water from Walmart, all that water comes down through there right adjacent to this and through the property, since they bought that part, that, that's. So all that's important, repairing zone along the stream, and there's a smaller stream that's runs, I think will be the dividing line maybe between what's developed and not. And it's a beautiful little creek. But there's another one on the east side of it that comes down from the, from the north. And it, some of these are underground for a while, then they come back up when they get out, out the middle of the streets and parking lots. And I, I called it the Rusty Bayou or something like that a few years ago when I was photographing it because of, partly because of some of the stuff that ran off of the box, Love Box Company's property, the industrial site, so. But that repairing zone is also extremely, extremely important. As recently as this summer, late this summer, Cindy Cope and I went on that property, which has just been growing up for, for years, and found, select, collected monarch butterfly caterpillars from the mass of milkweed that grows on that property. And if I'd known that development was coming, I would have suggested we dig up all those plants and transplant them to another prairie parcel or an old pasture that needs them or, or maybe Lake Fayetteville Park or some other area that the city's restoring. But anyway, so I'm, I'm not speaking against the project per se, but that it be treated as the delicate site it is and that even the smaller streams that come through into that area will be treated as significant for purposes of protecting the watershed and the trees along them at the repairing zone. But it, there's just, this rush of, rush of new development sounds great for, for many reasons, but yeah. Let's see, good, good we have a map. Okay, well, I assume everybody was looking to see if it confirms what I said about the, the map created by Natural Heritage, Fayetteville Natural Heritage Association. But it was, it is on the original map, whether it got on this one or not, I hope it did. But anyhow, it, it is a recharge, groundwater recharge area. It's the houses that are flooded currently by the west arm of the town branch of the west fork of the White River, down by, where Garland, and there's a bridge there and the old Levi plant across the creek from there. Some houses were flooded so many times, they just somehow accidentally caught on fire here a few years ago and disappeared, right there where you go into the park. And the park gets flooded, and when something's built out at, when something's built out at the Cummins property, whatever we're going to call it when it resurfaces with actual development, that water comes on one side of that park by the Levi plant, and all this water from the west and northwest comes together there. So more things will flood down there. So this is a critical part of Ward Four and affects Ward One immediately downstream. And just asking these guys to be merciful in their planning and think about the same things, low impact. Because I don't hear that discussed much about, by the council, and not nearly enough. And it, it is critical to the future because those water wars, like talking about Florida a while ago, they're coming here too. Texas already wants our water over, over the years. Thank you.
So the thing that, the thing that we're looking at is just the zoning, so the use of this property. And it makes me very happy that we're outside of that streamside protection ordinance, we're outside of the floodplain, and any kind of drainage or design would come, discussion would come later. Is that correct, Jeremy?
That's correct. That comes with the development proposal.
Okay.
And it's still subject to all of those same requirements with the addition of the streamside buffer ordinance on this particular property.
So when that happens, when, I would just say that it would be exciting if it could be a low-impact development design, but that's not, and, not but, but and, that would be great, except that we're just talking about the, the uses of the land as far as what can be put on there. And I would say that because it's not real clear from a major area or something, I, I think that the zoning proposed is, is fine, and I would support it. That's a motion.
Do you go to the second reading?
Yeah, we have a motion in a second to go to the second reading. We did. Does there anybody else want to comment on this? I'm sorry, did I shut off public comment too soon? Okay. Okay, we have a motion in a second to go to the second reading. Okay, we have a motion, a second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the room?
Gray.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described and rezoning petition RZN 11-3971 for approximately 25 and a third acres located at the east, at the end of Bestway Street and Hollywood Avenue from C2 Thoroughfare Commercial to RMF 12 Residential Multifamily, 12 units per acre.
Entertaining motion.
I move we go to the, suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the room?
Gray.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Okay. Number two, ADM 11-3993, UDC Amendment I-1 Zoning District, an ordinance amending Title 15 Unified Development Code of the City of Fayetteville, Unified Development Code, Section 161.27 to modify the rear setback requirement in the I-1 Zoning District. Kit?
Whereas the I-1 Heavy Commercial Light Industrial Zoning District in the City of Fayetteville Unified Development Code, Section 161.27, currently has a 25-foot rear setback for buildings adjacent to commercial, institutional, and industrial zone property, and does not have a setback adjacent to other zoning districts, including residential properties. And whereas it would be beneficial to clarify the rear building setbacks in the Heavy Commercial Light Industrial Zoning District, now therefore be ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, if the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the Unified Development Code, Section 161.27 Subsection E, to modify the rear setback to delete the words "when adjoining C, I, or P districts," and to modify, modify the setback from 10 feet to 25 feet.
Chairman. I think the ordinance on this one and the whereas clauses specifically states why this is coming forward, there is an I-1 Heavy Commercial Light Industrial District to 25-foot rear setback for buildings adjacent to commercial, institutional, industrial zone properties, but there's not a setback when they're, they're adjacent to other properties such as residential. What we're proposing to do is to strike the commercial, institutional, and industrial properties and just put a standard 25-foot setback for buildings. Again, that's for a building that's constructed in an I-1 Zoning District, and that is consistent with our I-2 Zoning District for industrial uses throughout the city.
Questions for Jeremy? Anyway, what public comment do we have on this? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the council, and so.
I move we suspend the rules, go to the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the room?
Gray.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
An ordinance amending Title 15 Unified Development Code of the City of Fayetteville, Section 161.27, to modify the rear setback requirement in the I-1 Industrial, Heavy Commercial Light Industrial Zoning District.
Suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the room?
Gray.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Okay, number three, amendment Section 33.240, an ordinance amending Section 33.240, purposes and duties of Article 11 Environmental Action Committee of Chapter 33 Departments, Boards, Commission, and Authorities of the Code of Fayetteville, to provide additional authority related to community wildlife habitat certification. Kit?
Be ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amend Section 33.240, purposes and duties of Article 11 Environmental Action Committee of Chapter 33 Departments, Boards, and Commissions and Authorities of the Code of Fayetteville, to add a new subsection C to the section, which shall read as follows. Subsection C, the Environmental Action Committee may coordinate all city efforts to obtain and maintain an annual community wildlife habitat designation through the National Wildlife Federation.
Sarah, I mean, you have this.
So the National Wildlife Federation has a program essentially intended to help educate communities through going through a process of certifying schools, city property, individual residences, community gardens, whatever the, the land, the location may be, and by going, having people think about different topics related to habitat. And so it's not something that people go and check to see if you really did it, it's mostly about having a conversation about what's in your yard, do you have a dish of water, do you have a tree that provides shelter, do you have an area where there can be a nest? So they're thinking about those things. Well, there are different criteria, and I'm going to have Terry Lane describe those, as she has been the champion of this project, and one of the criteria for, for having the City of Fayetteville designated as a community wildlife habitat that, that you all helped get going, was to have a, a organization that carries this forward after the community is certified. So we're not yet certified, we are still working on that, and I've mentioned that we need your help in doing that. But then, once it, once we are certified, then there are, there are fewer, fewer requirements, so to speak, fewer points needed for, for maintaining the certification. And the program requires that there be some body, some body or some organization that, that helps us maintain the certification. And so Terry, I would like, I would ask if you could describe what the, what is it, what does it take to maintain it? What has it, what do we still need to get certified in?
Right, what do we need to do?
Yeah.
Terry Lane on the Environmental Action Committee, and I'm the volunteer project leader for the Community Wildlife Habitat Project, and can I hand you all something first? I'll hand it up. This'll help. Okay. So, yeah, just as Sarah stated, since you all passed the resolution authorizing the city to move forward with obtaining this certification status with National Wildlife Federation, that was in 2010, the middle of last year sometime. Since that time, we've been, I'll say, intensely engaged in meeting all of the criteria to National Wildlife Federation so that we can become certified, and we are very, 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 very close. Currently, in the nation, there are 55, 55 certified wildlife habitat cities, and there are another 46 cities in the nation that, like Fayetteville, are working towards certifications. They're what's called a registered community habitat, and so Fayetteville will be the first one in Arkansas. But it takes most communities, on average, about two years to meet all of the criteria and become certified. We've been working at this about a year and a half, and the only thing we're lacking in all the categories, they require community projects, they require education goals, they require administrative goals, and they require properties to be certified based on your population. The only thing we're lacking is about 40 more homes. We have surpassed all the other goals, and, and the Environmental Action Committee members are working really hard right now to get those last several homes, and so early next year, we will be celebrating our certification status. So, once we're certified, we have to maintain our certification by reporting annually to our National Wildlife Federation liaison and meeting certain goals. So the thing that I just handed you, the, is a couple of things. The first one you're looking at should say annual goals at the top of it. So this is, you can think of this sort of like a points menu. To maintain our certification, we have to keep, we have to meet, earn a minimum of 40 points annually. So from this list, you can see some things are worth 10 points, some things are worth five points. So what our committee would be doing is getting together and saying, these are the things that we're going to do this year with wildlife habitat to maintain our certification. So there are things like securing articles in the news media, which we've had several already in the process of being certified, but maintaining our website, we already have the website, we get 10 points for that. We hosted a speaker series this summer at the Fayetteville Public Library, we had a five installment speaker series that was very well attended and collaborated with other groups. So those types of things, we would continue overseeing each year and reporting that we have done those things so that we can maintain our, our certification status. So that's two pages of that. The last thing, just, I'm not going to go through it because you don't have time, but if, if you're interested in what exactly we've been doing to get certified, if you turn to the third page, it says earning points towards certification, this whole list will give you a better idea of the types of things that, that we've, we've been doing to get the points to get certified. And like I said, we're really, really close.
Really close.
And so, so, and thank you again, Terry, for.
Thank you very much.
For one, identifying, it reminds me of, so, in the same way that America in Bloom is a program that Fayetteville participates in, it's a similar type of thing. So Bobby, at the agenda session, you had an idea, and I think it's a good idea. One thing is, so in maintaining this project, we would select from this menu, and what you're, so if I'm correct, you're suggesting that it, that we add language with City Council?
Subject to City Council approval. Everything may not need it, but I'm just saying.
Right.
We've got a lot of different committees, you know, we don't want to carte blanche.
Sure. So, so adding subject to City Council approval, I actually think that that helps maintain communication between what the program is and what, and City Council, and making that connection, and communicating so that you know what programs are, are happening and can participate and, and learn from those things. So I think, so.
Are you making that amendment?
Well, I, I don't want to steal it from Bobby if he wants to.
Are you making an amendment? Yes, I propose that amendment.
And I would second it.
Okay. And it's, it basically adds subject to City Council approval, is that correct? I want to be sure I got that right. So it's on the amendment. Everybody good with that? Any public comment on the amendment?
I've been on the Environmental Action Committee for a year, but I, I would have bought into this long ago, because we've had our yard certified for several years since the first year we heard about it, have a little sign and so forth. Anyway, the, I was going to add that the industrial sites and the commercial sites, all of them, if they have any land, they can set aside, and manages habitat can be eligible in this program. They don't have to have their full 100-acre site or something, it can just be portions that they designate and manage in the way it takes to have native vegetation. Thank you.
Thank you, Aubrey. Anybody else? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to go to the second reading.
We got a vote on the amendment.
Oh, I'm very sorry, you're absolutely right. Any other comments on the amendment? Sondra, would you please call the room?
Gray.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
An ordinance amending Section 33.240, purposes and duties of Article 11 Environmental Action Committee of Chapter 33 of the Code of Fayetteville, provide additional authority related to community wildlife habitat certification.
And?
So I would like to suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the room?
Gray.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
An ordinance amending Section 33.240, purposes and duties of Article 11 Environmental Action Committee of Chapter 33 of the Code of Fayetteville, provide additional authority related to community wildlife habitat certification.
And?
So I would like to suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the room?
Gray.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
An ordinance amending Section 33.240, purposes and duties of Article 11 Environmental Action Committee of Chapter 33 of the Code of Fayetteville, provide additional authority related to community wildlife habitat certification.
And?
So I would like to suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the room?
Gray.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
An ordinance amending Section 33.240, purposes and duties of Article 11 Environmental Action Committee of Chapter 33 of the Code of Fayetteville, provide additional authority related to community wildlife habitat certification.
And I would like to comment regarding, basically what Aubrey was saying, this can be used as a tool, and just for city staff, and I think Jeremy, when you all are communicating with people looking at rezonings, already, I mentioned to people, well, I think it was Blake saying, well, we could, we could designate that a community habitat project, and their, you know, their ears perk up. So it's a, it's a tool for helping communicate their good deeds to, to people in the area, and, and I think that's another way that this, this can be utilized.
Okay. Yeah, the comments from the council.
I got a question, man. I just, you know, I like this, I, I, when I'm reading through here the things, I know a lot of them are educational and policy pushing, or policy advancing statements, but they're also down-to-earth, showing people what to do. And as a guy who was raised here, you know, and I can, when I was a kid, I remember old men saying to me, "Well, I used to bird hunt over there." And I'd think, "Well, my God." Now I tell my nieces and nephews, "I used to bird hunt down here where Highland Dairy is," and things like that. But, you know, we used to have an abundance, and I just, one of my favorites is, and I'm not much of a hunter anymore, but I was an avid one at one time, is the quail and things like that, we had, you know, and most of the vegetation that we had in those days, a lot of them, I don't want to get Aubrey started on this, but a lot of it was native vegetation, you know, West Bediza. I think things like this could really help, you know, but it would be, excuse me, one, it would, pardon me, it would be neat if occasionally or once in a while, we could get a report back, you know, letting us know the progress, because I think it's a good idea.
I want you to know, we've certified a lot of schools in this city, too, the largest one, Fayetteville's the largest school to be certified in the state of Arkansas, from what I remember. I know Terry and I go to a lot of the schools, and we get schools signed up.
And one of the teachers uses an outdoor classroom.
Okay. Any other comments? Sondra, would you please call the room?
Gray.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, thank you, Terry.
Yes, thank you. All right, number four, come and go appeal. Appeal to Planning Commission's termination and limit access for closed come and go large-scale development in Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and Hill Avenue. I believe we'll start off tonight with a presentation from the staff.
But exciting conversation about curb cuts on this item.
Yes.
This property is about two and a half acres, located in the southwest corner of Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and Hill Avenue. Earlier this year, the City Council approved a rezoning of this site from multifamily district to C1 to allow for a convenience store and gasoline station, and what's proposed is 16-pump service station with about a 5,000-square-foot convenience store associated with that. On November 14th, the Planning Commission approved a large-scale development for this site with conditions, as they normally do. They also approved as part of their conditions a variance to allow a curb cut onto Martin Luther King Boulevard, restricting it to a ride-in, ride-out, citing safety concerns with left-turning movements both in and out of the curb cut. Approval was also conditioned upon the applicant constructing a driveway to connect to Royal Oak Parkway, which is a street to the west of this particular site. It is a public street, and it was also to provide for connectivity. The applicant has appealed those two conditions, essentially the condition that it's a ride-in, ride-out only onto Martin Luther King, and the, the connection to Royal Oak Parkway. The applicant has appealed those two conditions, essentially the condition that it's a right-in, right-out only onto Martin Luther King and the connection to Royal Oak Parkway. Unified Development Code Access Management Ordinance requires developments to access adjacent local streets. It also requires them to situate access to arterials two-hundred-and-fifty, at least two-hundred-and-fifty feet away from other curb cuts or streets. Staff recognizes that Royal Oak Parkway to the west is constrained, there's a median that's not owned by the city, it's not part of Rottaway, so that's private property. So, it's constrained essentially from a full commercial access to this property because of topography and because of that median. We feel that's a unique situation, and that's one of the reasons that we recommended in favor the variance to access Martin Luther King for this property. In addition, it also has about four-hundred feet of frontage, which is a considerable amount of frontage, a two-and-a-half acre site. So, we did recommend in favor of a curb cut. However, in our observations, which we visited the site multiple times, looking at both traffic for the high school movements in this vicinity, for students coming in and out, and university students as well, we felt left in or left out would create a dangerous traffic condition due to the proximity of left-turning movements to Hill Avenue at the light. As you're all aware, this site is in close proximity to Fayetteville High School, there are about 2,000 students and growing in the next couple of years with ninth grade being added to this area, many of the students drive to school. In addition, Hill Place Apartments to the south, directly behind this site, has approximately 800 residents, college-age residents, many of which also drive to campus. Hill Avenue adjacent to the site and to the north is utilized a great deal by high school students accessing the high school and hundreds of college students accessing the 2,100 space Harman Garage on Duncan Street. It's one of the primary access points to that garage from this area, and as well as multiple apartments off of Hill Avenue. The reason I mention that is because there is a concentration of younger, more inexperienced drivers in the direct vicinity of this proposed convenience store, probably more so than anywhere else in the city because of the proximity of the high school. We don't have another high school within the city of Fayetteville. Access management, therefore, to us, related to safety, is even more important due to the relative inexperience of drivers within this area. The appeal that's been filed requests a left-end turning movement from Martin Luther King into the site. Staff engineers, my staff and planners, have, again, visited this site on multiple occasions to observe traffic speed, which the traffic speed is posted at thirty-five miles per hour in this area, stacking of vehicles turning north onto Hill Avenue at the light, and also simply just turning movements in this general vicinity, and find that it will increase the danger for motorists in the areas, most left-turning movements do statistically, particularly in the transition zone for eastbound motorists turning left onto Hill Avenue at the light. The potential for head-on collisions are increased, as is the potential for rear-end collisions due to a shared stacking zone between the east and westbound turners. We took some, a quick video that I'll show you from the approximate location of the proposed curb cut, we showed this, the planning commission is part of their consideration as well. This shows the amount of traffic on a typical weekday with school in session. As you will see, the traffic stacks up well past this site, often when the light is red. Eastbound vehicles turning left onto Hill Avenue essentially jump into the turn lane much sooner when that traffic is backed up, and so, they're traveling literally thirty-five miles an hour down that turn lane to access, to access the light and make the left onto Hill. What you won't see is westbound movement, obviously, there's no curb cut there to turn into, so we don't really have any video showing that conflict. But, I did take several members of the council out last night, or yesterday afternoon, to show you what that turning movement would feel like coming both off of, coming through Hill, I'm sorry, west on Martin Luther King, and then coming back around Hill and trying to turn back into the site as well. And it's very evident that the transition, you're in the transition zone for those trying to turn north onto Hill Avenue as well. I'll just very quickly show you that, that video. So, that's looking, again, back west toward the high school, there's the train, train bridge over MLK there, looking back east toward the light. You can see traffic's backed up past this site quite a ways.
What time of day is that, Jeremy?
It's about 1:40.
And you may have said this, I'm sorry, but are you standing where the cut will be?
We're, we're standing where, I believe this was taken at a time, the curb cut has shifted several times, it's as close as we could approximate when the video was taken.
Okay. It's close, I know, just by knowing where the...
Right.
Light is gonna be where it lighted.
So, our concern, again, like, as you see that video, that van, it just pulled up very quickly, the same thing happens in the turning lane. When it's backed up, people jump into that turning lane heading thirty, thirty-five miles an hour, and the problem with that is the conflict of people trying to get in the same turning lane, turning left into this particular site. The site is well situated for access, I think that was one of the reasons it was chosen for this kind of development with a light at MLK and Hill Avenue. They're also being granted a full curb cut access onto Hill Avenue. We believe once drivers know the store is here, which will be evident due to the fact that there's not another one until you get all the way down past Razorback Road, half a mile, over half a mile away, that they will learn to easily access it via the light onto Hill Avenue. In addition, we are recommending another access point onto Royal Oak Parkway, which the planning commission agreed with. They are, again, appealing that condition to construct the connection, which in our opinion only provides additional access to the site for the over 800 residents that live at the Hill Place Apartments to the south. We do understand, obviously, that it's in the best interest of come and go to have as much access to their convenience station as possible. That's a business model that we see all convenience stores and gas stations utilize, and it depends upon access availability. However, it's in the best interest, in our opinion, of the city to also protect safety of our citizens in the long term. After an access is constructed, it's difficult, if not impossible, to change that. So, if something happened, we would not be able to go into that private property and change that access once it's constructed. Otherwise, we would've corrected College Avenue and older parts of MLK many, many years ago because of the issues that we see from not having access management ordinance for many decades. It's our recommendation to the city council to affirm the planning commission's eight-to-one vote on this particular issue, to allow a variance for access to Martin Luther King with a right-in, right-out turning movement only, and to require cross-access and connectivity to Royal Oak Parkway to the west. I also would like Chris Brown, our city engineer, very quickly to talk a little bit about the more technical criteria that they evaluate as engineers in the access management ordinance and how it relates to the proposed curb cut and safety.
All right. Thank you, Jeremy. If you could put the, yes, thank you. This is a drawing that I believe is in your packet, and it shows the existing conditions. This is about a hundred-foot stacking lane for Hill Avenue, represents about five cars worth of stacking distance. And then, a typical hundred-foot break in the left-turn lane, that's for the transition taper area for folks to get over into the left-turn lane and get into the stacking lane. So, that's a hundred and fifty, two-hundred feet, I'm sorry, total of stacking lane and transition zone. This curb cut is about two-hundred-and-forty feet away from the intersection. So, I think it's very easy to see that the transition zone here for the left turners turning onto Hill Avenue and the transition zone for cars that would be turning into the come and go, that is the conflict area. So, there's a potential for head-on crashes there with cars both trying to use that lane. The other problem that we see there is for, if cars are stacked into the left-turn lane to turn onto Hill Avenue, potentially, cars would then stack up into the driving lane, the westbound driving lane, to try to get into the come and go, you could then have potential increase for rear-end crashes for cars coming westbound. And, again, as Jeremy said, you guys saw out there, the folks that were out there, this is a real problem, this is not really a theoretical problem, this is something that immediately upon construction of this driveway and having left turns, we will have a conflict at this point. Just really, in a general sense, the research that we've done, driveways, left turns into and out of driveways are the majority of the accidents you see at driveways are caused by left turns. For cars turning left into driveways, about fifty percent of the accidents you see for cars turning, for driveways are related to cars turning left into the driveway. So, that's, I mean, those really are the conflicts, again, it's not real highly theoretical, not really difficult to see, it's pretty obvious that there's just not enough space here to provide stacking for both of the movements. So, for that reason, we recommend that the planning commission decision be upheld related to the driveway. Also, quickly about the Royal Oak Parkway connection, you may hear discussion about difficulties of grades, and you'll see the driveway does curve up and move closer to MLK, and that is due to a grade issue, is to allow the driveway to be an acceptable grade. If it came straight out this way, the driveway became too steep, so that's why the driveway is graded that way. We do have a submittal that does work, meets our criteria for this alignment. And, again, as Jeremy said, it does create a connectivity, creates another option for folks coming this way to get into the come and go, and creates opportunity for folks to get out, just another egress option for folks using the come and go. There is an economic impact to this site due to this driveway, there is a detention pond proposed right here that would have to be converted to underground detention to make that connection. So, just wanted to let y'all know that there is an impact from that standpoint. And that's all I have, I'll take any questions.
Hey, I don't know if this is for Jeremy or Chris, but if I'm going east on MLK, I'm gonna be able to turn right into the come and go.
That's correct.
Will that be a, will that be angled in any way towards, in that direction, so it's easily more, in other words, what's gonna stop me if I'm coming west from turning left in there anyway?
You might talk about the highway department standard section.
Right. I think if we go back to the previous drawing, it may be a little hard to see, but there is a little median here that would be constructed, and it's kind of angled in the direction of traffic flow that, so you would not, this is to create the right turn out. There would be something similar on this side that would angle out, so you would not be able to turn in. There are some highway department standards, we'll just have to work with the highway department to create a design that works for them and will also limit those movements that we want to limit.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the staff before we hear from Matt? Okay.
Oh, I have a question.
Yes.
Can you say that statistic again? Would you say some percent of crashes is a result of turning into driveways?
Right. Of the crashes that occur at driveways, about fifty percent of them are related to folks turning left into the driveway. And that's crashes that occurs at driveways, not at all crashes. But, half the time when something happens at a driveway, it's because somebody's trying to turn left.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Now, let's hear from Matt. I'm sure y'all have...
And Mayor, before they do that, let me just pass out the code, talks about the variance, what you're supposed to be looking at, because both sides are talking about the variance.
Okay.
So, I have highlighted the variance that you have for the access management standards that was passed by the city council.
Good evening, Aaron Rushing, I'm with CEI Engineering, representing Come and Go at Des Moines, Iowa. With me present today is Come and Go Representative Rob Wadley, as well as our traffic consultant, John Bolt, who will also speak right behind me. As you've heard, we're here, date your question, consideration of the planning commission decision of the two issues, of the Royal Oak connection and MLK driveway. I have some handouts I'd like to pass out of the site plan, it kind of depicts what the process we've gone through. So, it's been a long, arduous process, there's been multiple decisions, multiple changes. I'd like to go through that process with you and show you, you know, where we started, where we ended up, and it'd help you understand where we're coming from. site plan, that site plan A is what we originally submitted. You can see our drive cut on MLK is two-hundred-and-seventy-two feet and change away from Hill Street intersection, and we do show, obviously, Hill is on the east side, on the right-hand side of the sheet, MLK is on the north. They're not labeled, but that's, it's basically the same configuration as what you see on your screen. If you'll go to site plan B, we went through the planning process, addressed all staff's comments, a few of the changes were made from A to B is we saved all the trees on the south side a lot. We had to construct almost a seven-hundred-foot-long retaining wall around the whole rear of the site. We saved all the trees on the south side of the site, as well as the west side of the site. We implemented low-impact development techniques, bioswells on the west side, as well as added a lot more landscaping and mitigated all the trees on site. This site plan went to planning commission tech review. If you flip over to site plan, site plan B went to planning commission tech review. From that meeting, we added the new, if you'll go to site plan C, that planning commission tech review said make the connection to Royal Oak, which we did, you can see that depicted in site plan C. They also wanted us to move the connection MLK closer to Hill, which we did, and it ended up being like two-hundred-and-forty-seven feet. So, we made those changes, tabled it in the process, we can make those changes. Came back to the next planning commission tech review, which you'll see in site plan D, that planning commission tech review actually wanted us to take it back out, so we took it back out, and we, the connection of Royal Oak, and we also made the connection out on MLK, they wanted a controlled access out on MLK, so we added a right out. Their concern was left movements going out of the site, which we addressed with the raised median. So, there's a right out, there's a right in, and a left in now shown. And this is the plan that went to planning commission, site plan D, what came out of site plan D after planning commission, and what you'll see is in site plan E is what actually got approved. So, the connection went back in on Royal Oak, and the drive cut on MLK was converted to right-in, right-out only. So, you can see that this has been an up and down, back and forth process, trying to figure what is the right way to do it, in and out, in and out. I will tell you, Royal Oak has some issues. As Chris Brown had mentioned, there's some great issues, it's probably number one. It's really, it's only a right out, so it's only a northbound right. So, for someone to leave the store, to go to that drive, and they get out there and go right, why wouldn't they just use the right out that's on MLK? So, I think you'd be making a developer do a lot more work here that really wouldn't be feasible. So, you can argue the fact that, well, the people at Hill Place, they need a way in. Well, they already have a connection at the bottom through their development, so they could go right uphill and get into the store without getting on MLK, so that's not a good argument either. Hill Place has already said, they've got it on record, that they don't want a connection out here to this drive. It's a public street, I understand they don't control it, but they also own a median. Their concern was people pulling in here and making the turn at the bottom of that median. So, people would turn in, go to the bottom of that center raised median, which is, I think is an illegal U-turn, to go up to this site and turn in this drive. Our drive cut on MLK, we honestly would prefer it to push as far west as we can to eliminate some of that congestion out there with the cross-turning movements. We feel like it's better situated as far west as you can get it away from the Hill Avenue intersection. Some of the staff concerns, you know, really, they mentioned, if you look through the report, there's four outstanding issues. One of them is vehicles turning left in the development conflicting with vehicles turning right out of Royal Oak Parkway. I don't know that Jeremy had mentioned that, and I don't know if it's a big issue, but you do have, in our schedule... you do have, in our sketch, we've got 100 feet of separation. If you look at Sheet 6 of 6, this is really what we would like to propose, in which the difference is that, you know, number one, it's not connecting Royal Oak, and number two is having that left turn in. So Sheet 6 of 6, site plan F, is what Come and Go would like to do to make this project work. And you'll hear from Come and Go on the reasoning why they need that left-hand in. Some of the other concerns from staff vehicles traveling at high rate of speed on MLK. It's a 35 posted speed limit. I don't know that this developer can control the speed of the vehicles. The third outstanding issue, again, as both Chris and Jeremy mentioned, is the cross-turning movements. If they had a similar sketch, if you look at our sketch, it appears that we can stack, you know, six cars in each way out in that turning lane. So we feel like that it's, you know, not as critical as what they make it out to be. And you'll hear from our traffic consultant his opinions, too. Again, as Jeremy mentioned earlier, planning staff conducted their own research, included that intersection does back up traffic. It's shown in video. The video also doesn't show but one vehicle turning leftbound going north on the hill. All the vehicles were stacked in the straight eastbound lane, inside lane, because you're forced, when you get down to school, you're forced to make a turn there. Most of the time, this traffic doesn't back up in this intersection. 95% it's not an issue, it's pretty wide open. Again, the majority of planning staff concerns with stacking. It can be easily remediated with changes to the traffic signal. You'll hear from Mr. Boltie about the changes that could take place at that traffic signal that would make that intersection work better and function for everybody, which I don't think anybody has mentioned tonight, but you'll hear that. Final comments. Again, the left-hand turn into the site going westbound is a necessity. When you're going westbound, you're cresting the top of Hill, it's hard to see the development. If you don't get in that turn lane to turn at Hill, you go by it, and it would be ideal if that person had an opportunity to get in that turn lane and turn into that store as opposed to bypassing it, or turning into Royal Oak and then making an illegal U-turn. Either one of those are not a good situation. We have conducted a traffic and safety study. It's also included in your information. I'd like to introduce John Boltie. He is with Small Arrow Engineering, and he will talk to you about what his findings are.
Can I ask you, can I ask him a question?
Yes.
Did you say, I just wanna make sure, did you say that eastbound traffic, that we're gonna turn north on Hill Street, were, in the video we saw, were, that was part of the backing up right there?
That was not an in-center turn lane. That was in the straight.
I know, going straight, but, okay, I just wanted to make sure, I heard you right.
Hi there, I'm John Boltie, Small Arrow Engineering, based out of Joplin. We work in the Four State area, civil engineering, traffic consulting, that sort of thing. Trying to explain kind of how we hope to improve the situation here with access and make it safe for everyone. I know there's concern about the left-hand access off MLK. I just wanted to kind of go through a few things that we found as part of our little traffic safety assessment that Come and Go asked us to conduct. Some of the things you should have for exhibits, do you mind filling up the video again? I just wanna talk about a couple of things there, and then we can kind of look at the site plan. As you can see, this is just your standard intersection width. Now, go back to those. Just if you could freeze it on the traffic signal, I just wanna talk about the signal. There you go. As you can see, we just have two heads in each direction, three-section heads. There's no heads, those mast arms are shorter, so we've got kind of a substandard signal there right now as far as allowing for protected laps. Right now, it's a wide-open movement to make the left turns, northbound and southbound on the hill. Traffic flow is pretty light on Hill Street, so that's part of the reasoning why it's been left that way to this point in time. You've got about 23,000 vehicles a day on MLK, and you've got about 2,600 a day on Hill. So it's, you know, it's around 10% of the volume on the main line, so it's pretty light. What we're looking at as part of this improvement is to go ahead, replace those mast arms on MLK, put up the correct mast arms that reach out over into the center turn lanes, install either a five-section head or a four-section head for protected laps. There's some new things going on with protected laps now, where they're using the flashing yellow. If you've driven in some other communities and seen those go up. MUTCD is in the process of updating the manual, saying, really, it's, the drivers are finding intuitively, it's working better for them, it's safer. Really, once you kind of get used to it, it's just, it's really been slick. It saves a head on the signal, too. So, you know, we'd be looking at something like that to, you know, get those folks over in the left lane, get them a turn, and get them basically out of that queue, you know, that we're talking about the weaving space. And, you know, when you watch this little video, you know, we got one vehicle making that left, you know, what we were observing is it was maybe one to two vehicles, you know, per cycle were wanting to turn left. So it's pretty light. As far as moving over, to sneak over into that left turn lane and drive around the queue, obviously, that's an enforcement issue. Not supposed to do that. I mean, we all are guilty of those things, but that's, again, that's an enforcement issue that we need to be aware of, take care of. It is an uphill grade, so as you're coming to the intersection, I think your speeds are gonna tend to be a little bit slower, you know, climbing two-hill street. This is your old standard, you know, what we call a twiddle, two-way center turn lane. They're designed to be effective up to around 29,000 vehicles a day. Okay, or 23. So in terms of how it's designed, and its capacity, and its ability to function and work like it's supposed to, we're in pretty good shape. You get other places in town, down on College or wherever on the twiddle, and you know it's a different story, where you don't have medians and other access control. If we could go ahead and go to the site layout, I wanna kind of talk about, in plan view, some of our challenges. Now, this is proposed to be gone, so actually, in the revised site plan, the latest one that Aaron's presented to you, we've slid this intersection over the access about another 30 feet or so. So again, we're trying to maximize the weaving distance there between the intersection and where a left end could potentially occur. And so by going ahead and upgrading the signals here, getting those protected laps in there, so the one or two folks that are sitting here and queued up, basically, we're gonna get them out of there and get them on their way. And so then, when the east-westbound movement's released to go on through, you know, this person that might wanna go ahead and turn in left here should have a clear lane. Okay? One of the concerns we've got is with deliveries. Right now, if we have a delivery coming from the east westbound, and it's a truck, you know, he's got a fairly tight little move to make here, to make this left, and to make the right end to the store, you know, make the delivery and get out of there. As you can see, the underground fuel storage is over on the west side, and so, you know, typically, if they show up, they would probably like to, you know, come in, make that left, basically, parallel park along the west curb line, unload their fuel, circle around and leave on Hill. If they're turning left at Hill instead and coming into the site, this is gonna be a lot, you know, tighter movement for that vehicle to make, and so potentially, there could be some conflicts with, you know, cars that are sitting there waiting to leave the store, and they've got a truck, you know, turning in, trying to come over into their lane. So one of the benefits of this left end is it provides an access point for deliveries that come from the east. The other folks that we see using that would be basically people who are maybe unfamiliar drivers with the area, maybe they're up here on game day, whatever, and they're coming through, and they miss, you know, the left turn here to turn in to come into the store. So then they're gonna go ahead and say, well, I'm gonna, you know, slide over here, and I've got a second opportunity to make that movement in. So in terms of, you know, the drivers and the patterns, we're basically trying to clean up this intersection here, make it safe, have those protected laps, you know, maximize the space that's available, you know, for the weaving movements, so everyone can get on their way. And, you know, we're probably looking at, at the most, a couple of vehicles, again, per signal cycle, that, you know, this could potentially generate, that might wanna go in here. Once most folks start using it coming from the east, you know, they're probably gonna go ahead and turn at the light to do their access. I think I've covered most everything I wanted to touch on. I don't know if you got any specific questions about what you're looking at there?
I have a question for you. But first, Jeremy, on this schematic, is, does the access on the west side, does that cut across the median?
The, that schematic shows it does. It would not, that would not occur. So that access would be basically a right-in, right-out onto Royal Oak Parkway.
Is there a reason why it can't cut across the median?
The median in this particular case, which is unique, is private property. So the right-of-way is essentially the roadway. That was, that decision was made during the PZD process. There was one, an existing large tree that was preserved as part of that project. It's now gone, unfortunately. But in order to count that as preserved, they had to have that, it couldn't be in right-of-way. Secondly, there are signs located within that. We don't allow signs in right-of-way, so that was another reason to preserve it as, preserve it as private property. So the median would be maintained by Hill Place Avenue. Again, it would not be maintained by the city. And that, there were several reasons that that ended up being private. I think there are, for reasons like this, I think there are things we need to look at in the future when we make those types of decisions and recommendations, though, to allow for full access.
I would add, Alvin Betty, that as we bring you each quarter of those things where we get unintended consequences from our ordinances, this would be an example of one, where we're not able to get that cross-access point because it's the private item that we wanna be able to change and give us the ability to get that in the future. So you will see a change coming on that. Doesn't help us in this situation, but to your point.
Is there a reason why we couldn't negotiate with the property owner or even condemn that because it's public infrastructure to make that go through?
I think that's probably what it would take, and it would obviously have to be justifiable for a public purpose. The property owner has certainly indicated that they do not wish for that to occur, so it would take some sort of action in order to do that.
Never mind then.
You know, just to clarify, a little more information about why we moved away from this. This is, again, a pretty short distance here, so you really don't have much of a throat for, you know, folks to circulate and come in through here, so potentially, you know, you might have somebody that's kind of got their rear end hanging back out into the street, you know, trying to get in here and turn. And this is a 10% grade, so I mean, on a flat piece of paper, it looks nice, but, you know, we've got a pretty good hill there to climb, and so, you know, wintertime, it's not desirable. Obviously, it's too steep of a grade for trucks, for deliveries, and you try to keep them around 5% max. And the folks that live down in here, they've, of course, got another way out over on the hill, so in terms of them, if they're gonna drive to the store, you know, or they can walk, if they're gonna drive, they're gonna probably, you know, just come uphill and come in from the east. So in this case, it seems to make a pretty good sense just to leave these two uses separated at that particular point.
So I have a question about the report, and there's a statement, just on page five, I don't, says, at the bottom, it says, is our opinion that given these above-stated conditions, an unskilled driver could still potentially conflict with an eastbound left movement as stated in the City of Fayetteville Planning Commission report?
Right.
So it seems like that agrees with what the Planning Commission...
Well, again, it gets into the weaving space, and so we're looking at how to maximize the distance for weaving space, and also by having the protected laps at the intersection. That basically gets those cars out of the way, so that person's got a straight shot in there. Again, we're not trying to encourage everyone to use that left end. It's primarily set up for the deliveries, so they have a clear circulation pattern through the store, and they're not conflicting over at the entrance on Hill. And then, like I said, you're gonna have folks from out of town who may not know, okay, I need to turn, you know, uphill to come in and get to this store.
Anybody else? Any questions?
Mayor, I'd just say that in that one instance there, an unskilled driver following eastbound on a right-in, right-out could rear in somebody if they're turning right in there. Well, a skilled driver might not.
Yeah, there's other conflicts in all different directions.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's, which one do you wanna pick on?
Yeah.
Again, we think it's a really good project because it allows you to really improve your traffic signal there. It's a great way to get it done.
Mayor, I figured I'd just make a comment, because I wanna defend the staff's position because of a couple of things. One, I think that when we talk about where risk is gonna happen in these developments, we have these situations all over town where developers will come in who have other economic models, like Walmart, Neighborhood Market had about a left-in, left-out access. On Weddington, we've had it on McDonald's, the same argument on Mall Avenue and Joyce Boulevard, about a left-in if you're going eastbound, you can't do it. We're restricted. You could do it illegally, I guess, but it wasn't designed to do that for the very same reasons that we're talking about today. And I think that there are differences here. I think Hill Street, which is currently contracted under contract by the University of Arkansas to function as a student housing development, creates circumstances that are different times of day. You saw a video at 1:00. We could come out here at 8:00 or 9:00 in the morning when classes start. People are gonna go right out of this because you can't turn left, to go to the stoplight, to turn left going north to Duncan, where the new Harmon Deck is. It is the primary access point to get to that side of the university. When the high school moves its property to the front of MLK, the parking that currently exits on the back end and uses Stone and Duncan and those streets will naturally move with its protected light there now on that area into MLK and dispersed to go both downtown as well as towards the fast-food section. Brenda's Bigger Burger, just go there during school, you're going to see significant amount of high school students patronizing that business. And in terms of the curb cut, you know, I'm not gonna lay on our sword in terms of the staff about that additional access off of Royal Oaks, but it was originally designed because this is functioning like a student housing complex where people have cars. It's not just gonna be a walking access, and it's logical that they would go, like they go out when they leave to go to the university. If you can't turn, if the traffic stacks coming out of this on Hill from the people using the light as an exit, and you're coming from the apartment complex, it's logical that they would go up to Royal Oaks and try to access to the site. And we were trying to promote an access without having to get on MLK for the primary entrance and exit out of that apartment complex. It wasn't done to add added costs, and I certainly understand our economic model on that. And when we make these decisions, you know, this is the tough part of staff, because the Come and Go location at Township, we love how that corner changed. We love them as a business in our community. We want to have them here, but at what price of a sales tax risk versus us telling some junior or senior's parents that we created more of a risk, whether, whichever direction it is that we go? And we know already that these left turns don't necessarily work. We have that situation right now in Township because we allowed it, and you can't use it. So the, you know, other argument I would make is that good businesses get found. This was an argument we had on this McDonald's on Joyce and Mall that Alvin and Drew Drug knows about. We heard how, you know, you would pass it, and you would need to be able to turn left. Amazingly, people find it because they find good businesses, and that's what, we do believe they're a fantastic business for our community. So, you know, we've really had to weigh all of these options. So I'm saying that to you because I don't think the staff looked at it as a means of trying to be difficult. I think it looked at it saying, we really think there's a safety issue here, and we think this safety issue has potential to increase when the new high school gets open, when this place continues to function as a residence hall area, and we're gonna see more of that. And we're going to see more of that as we see more of these developments you see coming through with this kind of density with the Sale Barn property, the Love Bunch property as people go and access Harmon. That's, that's the access road, this intersection. And it's a reason that you would pick this because it's going to have high traffic count.
Okay. Do you want to continue?
Again, as far as traffic counts, you know, we're under the threshold for a five-lane section. So, you know, from that standpoint, you know, we're pretty comfortable with that weaving space. Improving the signal really is the key to a lot of things I'm hearing, obviously with the high school. You know, if you are going to have some increased movements on hill, having those protected laps in all four directions now is going to be a good thing. Really, the thing that I'm concerned about is the delivery vehicles getting kind of hung up. If they're coming from the east, having to use hill to get in and out of that entrance. It's, it's a, it's a tight little movement there. And it would be a lot, lot easier for them to be able to come in off MLK. And obviously, those people can be instructed to show up during off-peak hours. I know we've got a video here during peak. And obviously, it's queuing up from down at the T and folks are trying to get over so they can make a left, you know, quarter mile down the road. You know, these are situations we have in every community that we have to deal with. And, you know, we're, we're comfortable that the signal improvements really is going to make this thing work in that the left end is a, you know, just a kind of a complement to the project to provide that relief valve for their delivery vehicles and provide that relief valve for, you know, folks that don't, don't make the access at the line. I'm going to turn it over to you and let you elaborate on the business side.
Good evening. I'm Rob Wiley with Come and Go, West Des Moines, Iowa. Did everybody pick up that packet on the agenda session?
Yes.
We can all agree that that's a pretty landscaping plan, right? That's, it's got a lot of trees. Last time we were here, we're talking about 2.65 acres and how we're going to divide it up. And we weren't able to do that. But you look at that plan, there's a, we're going to be planting 100 trees, 300 bushes. It's probably one of the prettier sites that I've ever seen. So a little bit about Come and Go, I know the packet talks about Come and Go. But a quick summary, we are a family-owned company. We have 430 stores in 11 states. 10% of our profits go back to the local charities, and we've been in business for 52 years. So. Why does Come and Go need the three-quarter access? I'm going to try to explain our internal investigation process. Several years ago, Come and Go started a BI department, which stands for Business Intelligence Department. We've always tracked the trends, but now we have an analytical department specifically for that. Our BI department travel, or takes multiple variables. Literally, there's hundreds of variables it, it talks about. One, one restroom versus two, and, and the, the size of the chip rack. And all that stuff makes a difference in our model. So it actually formulates the site plan, the building itself, and it spits out a return on investment. And they're very good at it. This is a, you see why we have a department like that because this is a $3.6 million development for us. The most important site plan factor in this business intelligence model is access. I think you guys all are aware of that. We're a convenience store and it's all about convenience. BI has told us that the situation taking away a left end will eliminate almost half the traffic off of MLK going into our store. They're calculating 29% decrease in EBITDA by eliminating a left end. I mean, I shake my head sometimes at these guys and think, hey, people are going to turn at the light, right? That's what's going to happen? These guys are pretty good. Actually, we've, they have an excellent record and eight people are now in this department and all they do is study consumer demands. So we're very analytical. Here are some of the BI reasons why the EBITDA has decreased between a three-quarter and just a right-in-only access. The competitors on MLK have full access. I, I don't know if Aaron mentioned it or not, but I believe between the interstate and school, there's like 105 full accesses and one restricted, which is on Royal Oak, which is a three-quarter. There's no right-in, right-outs. So our competitors have full accesses, not just the sellers of fuel. Nowadays, we have more competitors. Our buildings have evolved from 2,400 square feet in the 80s to 3,400 in 2000. And last year, you guys were the one on College and Township. It's now 5,000 square feet, and that's our model now. We have new competitors and they're fast food restaurants and they're Walgreens. We survive on inside sales. It's not gallons. It's, we hardly make anything. We actually have like a break-even schedule for, for gallons, so. So we're making a bigger building so we can sell more things, so we have convenience to the customers. Bottom line, we need to be able to compete with the other competitors which have the full access. Another variable, and I believe we talked about, so traveling westbound, you guys have a lot of visitors here. I mean, you have a college, a lot of people that have not been on that street. If there was a, and I guess staff probably knows more than I do, but it's kind of like, well, you guys have been out there. So it's like a plateau. And basically, that plateau starts right on MLK. So you're actually going up, if you're traveling westbound, you're going up and you're trying to beat that light. And if you don't make that turn, you can't get into our store. And this is strictly for visitors because if you guys have been there once and know how to get in there, you'll stop and check a left. Again, I just want to emphasize, emphasize that we are a convenience store and we're not a destination facility. So when we lose those customers, those first-time customers, they don't try to make a U-turn and go back for gas. I think you guys know that. Anyway, those are the biggest factors BI's premise of need in three-quarter access. I guess my last point is the economic impact to Fayetteville. Our intentions are to add 15 more jobs. This is a $3.6 million development. We use a GC from Des Moines, but they hire local subs, mostly, majority. There's a couple specialties we bring in. Also, tax base. Off the numbers of our new store on College and Township, we're averaging monthly tax from state, 4,700 we're giving up to the state, to the county 1,300, and the city is 2,100. Now, it takes us several years for our stores to get ramped up. This is not ramped up by any means. I would say it'll be at least double that in the next two years. So I guess I want to thank all of you for my time. I've been visiting northwest Arkansas for the last five years. It's, it's a really good city. I've enjoyed Fayetteville. We're very happy with College and Township. Staff has been very professional and thorough. We've had our differences, but it is what it is. We need a three-quarter access in order for us to build a $3.6 million lead certified store. Any questions?
Any questions?
I have a question.
Sir?
So regarding, I guess, this is regarding the business. So for deliveries and looking at, it, it seems like most deliveries would come from the interstate. And so they would be coming and heading east. So very few would be actually heading west trying to turn left.
Well, we do have a new store on College and Township, so if they make a delivery to that store and then come to ours, I guess, that would be making a left turn to get in.
Okay. Or they could just...
Make a U-turn somewhere?
Oh, they could come around, head, head toward and turn left on College and go north and turn right into the one and then head back to the interstate.
Okay.
And then I have another question for Jeremy. Can you talk about, and I, I think there was a question about other curb cuts, and I know that, can you give me a timeframe understanding of, there's a new access, the access ordinance is relatively new?
It is. We adopted an access management ordinance, the most current form, in 2008.
Okay.
We didn't look all the way to the interstate, but between Hill and Razorback, which is basically the university access point, most of those are relatively new developments. Not all of them, but within the last 10 to 12 years, there are about 10 curb cuts there, all of which are shared but one. So they, they share between other businesses. That's to Razorback Road. That includes some of the University of Arkansas properties. So we've had some access management ordinances in place, just not nearly as comprehensive as we had. I would say west of Razorback toward the interstate, as you all know, there are much older business, businesses there. I think probably with the exception of the Taco Bell, which recently rebuilt and they removed their curb cut that was directly adjacent to Hollywood. McDonald's, I'm not sure when that was built to that location. But it, it does have, I think, a full access curb cut before you get to the light and then the access also off of, off of Hollywood. But most of the others, there was no access management policy whatsoever when they were developed. You see some of the properties with, entire properties for, just one full big, large curb cut. And so I think the difference, too, is that we don't have many 16-pump convenience store gas stations in the city, period. So the amount of traffic accessing the site for convenience and for those services is as much, in terms of the competitors, we're talking about more like four to six pumps is probably the closest competitor in this particular, in this particular area.
Okay.
So that's the other concern. I will say, we did, we did take in consideration the, the changes to the signal heads. We actually, staff recommended that as part of our initial recommendation, primarily due to our fear of the stacking on Hill Avenue, making left turns out in the proximity of this curb cut. We were afraid that people trying to turn left out of Hill as well, accessing the light would, would have issues. So that, that was one of the reasons that we looked at recommending that, that full-turn access point. And that came from our initial investigation. I don't believe we've had the opportunity, I'm not positive about this, but I don't believe we had the opportunity to look at the traffic study that was passed out tonight in detail as part of that analysis. But it didn't, there weren't really many surprises when I just kind of briefly looked through it.
Great. Thanks.
Judge?
Regarding your business intelligence group?
Yeah.
In, in the traffic study, it mentions 23,000 cars a day on MLK. Do you know what formula your, your BI group used? Like what percentage of that group of cars do you consider your customers on a daily basis? Do you know what they used to give the number?
So are you talking about a hill?
Oh, yeah. Where'd they get the 29% loss number?
Okay. Yeah, so basically, what's the traffic count on MLK?
23.
23. So basically, it's, it's, they actually calculate, we only get just over half that traffic, if that answers your question.
Yeah, so...
And we're going to get a few more. It's going to be more than half because obviously, people local to Fayetteville will know...
29% of 23,000 cars is roughly 66, 70. So if you cut that in half, 3,300 and something cars, they're saying would miss that left-hand turn and therefore not turn left into your business?
Or, or a loss of customer, yes.
Okay.
I mean, I, I, I'm not sure that's what they're saying. Don't take that the wrong way, but I could see it as a loss of customer.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else have any questions for that? Okay.
Just one.
Okay.
Do you have teenage drivers in your home?
I have a four-year-old and a six-year-old and they're not driving yet.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for your time.
Anybody else from your team?
I got a question, Mayor.
Yeah. Actually, I...
Okay.
Oh, go ahead. For myself.
Yes, come on up if you're going to.
I was going to ask Kim one, Mayor, since he's a Come and Go guy.
You bet.
Is this a deal, Buster?
Uh, yes, it is. You know, we actually just terminated the one we have in Weddington, so this is the last site I have in a contract in northwest Arkansas.
Thank you.
Yes, you have someone else that would like to speak? No?
As you say, J.R. Yeeves, Fayetteville, Arkansas, Chambers Bank. We currently own the property. We have been working with Come and Go now for almost a year, I think. Have extended the contract multiple times. We've talked to other people involved that were looking at this site. I think a lot of them have the same issues with access to, to the property off of MLK. Bobby, to your question to Come and Go, I think we're at the 11th hour on this particular site. And, you know, we do believe that they will take their business elsewhere as far as this location. So I'm in support of it. I know that we as a bank are in support of it. And hopefully, y'all can find in support of it, too.
Thank you, Judge. Okay. There's nobody else who'll open up the public comment? Hold up. You seem to be one of our regular customers.
I'm Aldrich Shepherd. I live off...
It's getting late for you.
Aldrich Shepherd. And I live a few blocks downhill over on Duncan at the intersection with 11th Street. So I'm a potential customer, of course, and one of my neighbors talks about the potential there is hope they'll offer the same discount on gasoline that the Walmart does and they'll go in for sure. But anyway, it's, I, I never studied economics and, you know, my old age, I was studying wine flowers and things, but didn't take enough botany courses my childhood. But the, when, when you talk about the revenue, I'm sure there's a big burst when you open a new store and they, they do bring in quick extra revenue. People go buy something new that they haven't been buying. But when they're talking about the competitors, these are people who will lose part of that revenue that comes there, however many customers they're expecting to get a day or have to get to operate. So we don't know whether, I guess with all the apartments that are being suggested and approved to go in, there'll be some extra people living in the area. But that economic comparison is hard to judge. But I do know that's a terrifying slope right west of the intersection of Hill Avenue. I mean, when they put a light there, the first time they did it, there should have been a left-turn signal dedicated to go on the hill. Because you're facing people who are coming over there, you can't see their lights, they're up and out. And they come flying over the hill, sometimes it's 65 mile an hour traffic comes from the university into that thing. And it's terrifying. Mr. Robert Williams has had two accidents that were his fault of that hill in his, quite a few years living on Hill Avenue. Got a lot of places that haven't healed up yet. Doesn't get around as well as it used to. But anyhow, it should only be allowed to go in, if you're coming from the west, you turn right. Coming from the east, you turn at the light. You don't turn in between there and that drop-off. I wouldn't feel safe using it if they put it in. Of course, I would be coming from downhill avenue to get there. But the idea of the, when you talk about the watershed, we know it will send more water immediately down to the town branch. But they are keeping trees and I hope the natural soil immediately on par with the lot and that will help mitigate or prevent some of that. But the, the much-talked-about Royal Oak in the, in the Aspen Ridge Plan, those of you who were on the council back then, remember there was one big oak tree out of, I don't know what the count was. I think I had, there was a guy who did a study and I happened to talk to him after he'd done the study for those developers. And the, the number of significant-sized trees was incredible on that land. So that one big oak was left there in that median. Well, it died shortly after, or by, before, I think, that first development failed. It was dying immediately because they were red dirty and filled around it. And the canopy went out where the traffic lanes were. So guess what? Nobody from my neighborhood's going to say there's anything wrong about putting a cut through at some point across that median now. It's no longer a home to a Royal Oak. It's a name that means nothing anymore. And it was wrong like so many other places, like, well, I call them the whole place, Aspen Ridge, where it was, it was Town Branch Swamp, actually. Anyhow, not speaking against the development, but pointing out that it is a suicidal thing to, for those who would try to turn across traffic in that area. Because that traffic count, that little video shows nothing like what it will be on a football game night and those things. But late on any weekend night, you have that hideously fast drunk driver traffic coming through there. So let's, let's remember that unless you can level that thing out so you can see from sitting at that stoplight all the way down under the underpath somehow, then it's always going to be down. Thank you. Thank you.
What other public comment do we have? Sneak down, I'll bring it back to the county.
Mayor, I've got a question for our city engineer if I can. They talked about this correction or improvement on the traffic light. Is that something that we can do, or we have to get permission from the State Highway Department, and how does that need to do?
That would be, require a permit from the Highway Department. They would want to see that the counts, and it's like anything else, it has to be warranted, it has to have the correct number of counts before they would actually approve that, so that will be a permitting item, along with...
What's your experience on that? What would be your guess right now about whether or not they would go along with that?
Without seeing the traffic counts that this study has, I don't know. It's a relatively straightforward warrant analysis without knowing what the counts are.
But you would have to have taken a look at their traffic study that they gave us, and we don't have a traffic study right now concerning the safety of this particular proposed ingress and egress into this business, do we?
Right. There was no traffic study provided to the staff.
Okay. How long would it take for you and your staff to look at the traffic study and be able to analyze and give the city council your analysis of the traffic study?
Well, I think we could do that relatively quickly by the next council meeting, for sure.
Thank you. My concern is this, Mayor and City Council. The variance provision that you all passed says you will grant a variance unless, and it says if a parcel on a corner of an arterial or collector street provides such short frontage along the major street, if there is no safe ingress/egress functional location on that street, the planning commission, or now you on appeal, may deny the curb cut or may limit such curb cut to ingress or egress only. But you would need to be able to initially find that there is no safe ingress/egress functional location, and that generally requires something more than what I've heard tonight. The video that you saw was about 20 seconds of the life of that street, and I guarantee you, if this would be appealed into court, that video would have zero weight, because you can go out there with a camera and you just decide when you're going to shoot it, and if the applicant was here, they'd shoot it, and there'd be no cars in sight. It'd be there, you can always do it. So that is not the kind of evidence that even though it might, you know, it does show you something about the intersection, it's just simply not like a traffic study. And here we have been provided a traffic study at this late hour, and I don't think it's fair for our city engineer not to be able to look at the traffic study and come back and say, I agree with it, or I disagree with it, and here's why. So I think that it would be, at this point, prudent, even though I'm sure the applicant doesn't want to delay this, but they could have given the traffic study to us earlier. I think that as your legal counsel, I would say, I would want our city engineer to look at their traffic study and try to make a determination and report to you, so you get his expertise on this, so we hear both sides of the story, because I think otherwise, we have a little bit of trouble here saying there's no safe ingress/egress functional location, because we just simply haven't done the kind of study that would normally be able to come out with that result. I know that we did have a diagram from the city engineer, but that diagram is actually based not on the precise location they're recommending, it was, their location is farther back from the light, and so the stacking is a little bit different. And so I would rather have them have an opportunity to look at this traffic study before you all make a decision tonight.
I think that's a very good suggestion, but I'd also like for the city engineer to somehow evaluate the impact of the, or the potential impact that school's going to have, because that's going to be major, I think, whenever all that traffic is put on Martin Luther King that is now going up on whatever, stone. So, but I think you're right. I think we ought to, I just leave it on this reading, or is this a...
This is the field.
He also wanted me to table it.
I'll table it, and also, I had tentatively prepared a resolution, because I think it needs to have a resolution, and the resolution would be granting the appeal and approving the plat, because I think the burden is on the applicant, and so they have to have five votes to pass a resolution. So any resolution should be in the affirmative, because it will take five votes to pass it. In other words, I wouldn't want a vote to deny, because if you only got, if you didn't get five votes, then maybe it'd be approved. So I've got, I'll have a resolution ready for the next city council meeting, but it will be in the affirmative. Someone would have to move in favor of that, and maybe you'd die for lack of a second, but the burden really is on the applicant to get the five votes needed to pass a resolution to approve the change.
Okay. Well, let's cut to the chase. In other words, we're going to table it for two weeks, basically.
That would be my recommendation.
I'm in the second.
Two weeks, right?
For two weeks.
Okie doke. Any comments on the tabling? Okay, all right. Senator, would you please call the room?
Gray?
Yes.
Budra?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tennet?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that concludes our holiday evening. And is there any announcements to be made?
Mayor, I got one.
Okay.
I'd like to say Merry Christmas to everybody, and I'd like to give a shout-out to Katie Tennet for the wonderful Christmas treats. She'll be first.
You have an announcement to share, Stan?
Yes, Mayor. I want to remind citizens that are watching the council meeting tonight that the city offices will be closed on Friday, December 23, and Monday, December 26, for our Christmas holidays. Solid Waste Trash Services will run as regularly scheduled, so if you have service on Monday for residential service, put your trash can out. We will be operating our solid waste division. Also, wanted to make a note that the Fayetteville Public Library launched a new website redesigned today, so for citizens to check that out for your online library services.
Before everybody leaves now, I just want to say a couple things, and it'll take just a sec. I want to thank the city council's work this year. I was just thinking about all the stuff that we have looked at 2011, and I'm going to give a quick rundown, and I want the citizens to know this. In the course of the year, this city council has looked at streamside protection ordinance. They have looked at a smoking ban in bars. They've looked at the Rupel Road Extension. They've looked at the 10-year sale tax renewal, 2012 budget, and now apartment recycling was passed tonight, and you all have done that in the course of a year. You've looked at all those issues, and I know those are, there's a lot of councils that will look at one or two of those in a year, and you all have looked at three, six of those in a year's time, and that is, that is a tremendous accomplishment, and I want to thank you all for the work that you do in this city, and not just all the easy stuff that people thinks that we do, but I mean, all those, those big tough issues that have to be brought and barked down, and I appreciate your participation and your ability to do, make tough legislative decisions in here. Also, I want to take the time to thank my staff, which I will tell you is top of the line. I believe I have, and I say this everywhere I go, I believe I have the best staff and city council, and the mayor, and state of Arkansas, and I really mean that. I've got a great city attorney, great city clerk, and everybody works well together, and I think that's very important. And so, as I close down, I want to tell, say to the citizens, happy holidays on the behalf of myself and the city council and the staff and the city of Arkansas. Have a great, great time and enjoy the holidays. Thank you all.